Good evening, welcome to the September 26th meeting of the Glendale City Council, being called to order at 6:04 PM. May we have roll call?
Yes, council members.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kasakian.
I'm here, and per AB 2449, I'm announcing that I'm connected virtually, and there's no one in the room with me.
Councilmember Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Botman.
Here. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let us begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Gabrielino Tonga people. I will now read a quote from Paulo Freire. Because love is an act of courage, not of fear. Love is a commitment to others. No matter where the oppressed are found, the act of love is commitment to their cause, the cause of liberation. Thank you.
Thank you, may be seated. Okay, Madam Clerk, may we have your report, please?
Yes, the agenda for the September 26, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on September 21, 2023, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, and what is our next item?
Mr. Mayor.
Next, our presentations.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize, but before you get to that, just under, with respect to Councilmember Kasakian's participation, the Brown Act does permit remote participation in a situation where there's just cause, in a situation where one of those occurrences being if the council member, or member of the legislative body, has an illness or sickness that could be contagious, and my understanding is that council member has either cold or flu and therefore cannot participate in person. So that section of the Brown Act, though, does require the council to approve his participation, so I'm asking for this time for a motion to approve Councilmember Kasakian's participation in the remainder of the meeting.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve Councilmember Kasakian's participation?
I'll move the motion.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Does that include voting?
It does.
With a full vote?
It does, and just so record, so Councilmember Kasakian, when he is participating, we'll have both his audio and video on to participate in this meeting.
Okay, okay. So let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Botman.
Yes.
Thank you. So now, Councilmember Kasakian is a full participating member in this, in tonight's...
That's correct.
Right, oh, okay. Good. And to Councilmember Kasakian, we hope you're not feeling too sick and that you get better quickly.
Mayor, if I may, I'm...
Yes.
My intent is to participate in as much of the meeting as I possibly can. I have tested for COVID, and it came back negative, but my condition is not such that I'd want to be around other people spreading my germs. It had been a while since I'd been sick, and I'd forgotten how bad it could be to have the flu, so I will stick around as long as I possibly can.
Okay, and we appreciate you considering the health of all of us and still taking time out to weigh in on some of the important things we have coming up tonight. Okay, so with that, the next item, please?
Next, our presentations on appointments. A Agenda Preview for the Meetings of Tuesday, October 3, 2023. The regular meetings for October 3 have been canceled, but there will be a council in your neighborhood, special meeting at 6:00 PM at Spar Heights Community Center, which is located at 1613 Glanco Way, Glendale, California 91208.
Thank you. Mr. Glaney, is there anything else we want to announce about next week's special meeting in the neighborhood, or anything about the agenda?
Mayor Botman, we are in the process of finalizing the agenda. We'll have three or four items. I know of one, they'll be public benefit programs the council recently adopted, and we are working with staff on coming up with items that'll be germane to that neighborhood if possible.
Okay, and maybe just for the public's sake, what is this special council in your neighborhood all about?
Yes, thank you for asking. So per council's direction, the intent was to provide an opportunity for neighborhoods to attend council meetings in their neighborhoods, as opposed to driving down to City Hall to attend these council meetings. As is the case with council in your neighborhoods, we will make presentations, we'll open it up for questions by the public, but council will not take any actions regarding any of the items being presented.
Okay, but we welcome the public to attend, doesn't matter where you live, you don't have to live in that Spar Heights area. Come and join us and participate. Councilmember Kasakian?
If staff can actually provide an update, I know that when we set this, I had requested that we do outreach to the residents that live in the area. I think one of the issues that I've at least seen is there tends to be more staff than community members present. I think the one that was very successful was in the Rancho community, but not the case in South Glendale. Can you give us a brief update on the outreach that's been done for this upcoming one?
Yes, Councilmember Satrian, staff has taken your advice and suggestion to heart, and they actually issued a survey to the residents in the neighborhood, within that neighborhood, to actually come up with ideas that they like to, on items that they like to be updated on at the meeting. We have posted on our websites, we have sent notifications, flyers with students who live in that neighborhood, and we have done extensive outreach and hoping for a decent-sized attendance.
Awesome, thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, our next item.
Our next item is the Annual Legislative Update from Assemblymember Laura Friedman.
Okay, and I see Assemblymember Friedman, yeah, has perfect timing, just arrived, and we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me, and I want to first of all thank all of you for the hard work that you do for the city. I know from personal experience that it's a very difficult job, and you all make us proud, so thank you for all of your work. I wanted to go through tonight some of the bills that we now have on the governor's desk, not going to go through everything, and I'm not going to talk about bills that, you know, that we're going to continue to work on, that didn't actually get there, and I want to focus on bills that I think are going to be of particular interest to the constituents of Glendale, and also to talk a little bit about what we were able to do to help you with the budget this year. First of all, you know that I've spent many years going back to my city council days working on traffic safety, and you know what a huge problem Glendale and the surrounding areas have had when it comes to keeping our streets safe, particularly for pedestrians and cyclists. I did a bill a few years ago that you all supported, AB 43, that allowed you to cap, and in some cases, lower speed limits, and working off of that, I've been working on legislation for four years now, giving six cities in California an additional tool to pilot for five years, and Glendale is one of those cities. This is the first time that we've been able to get this bill through to the governor's desk, and I will say that every year that we've worked on this legislation, we have gotten more and more support from all across California. We've been working to refine this policy to make sure that it's fair, that it's equitable, that it's very targeted, and changing the culture of speeding and reckless driving that we all know is so epidemic in our community. And as someone that has a 10-year-old daughter at home, I worry every day more about what happens to her just when she tries to ride her bike down the street than I do pretty much about anything else, just given the statistics of how traffic violence is one of the leading causes of death for young people. And just to put it in context, we have seen a 30% to 35% increase in fatal and really, and severe accidents for pedestrians and cyclists year after year for the past several years. So we're going in the wrong direction in this state when it comes to traffic violence, and enough is enough. Lives are being lost, lives are at stake, and what this bill would do, this is AB 645, and it will allow, under certain conditions, for Glendale and five other cities to pilot the use of automated speed enforcement, meaning using a camera. And just before people start shaking their head, because I would too if someone said that, especially if you remember the old red light camera program, which everybody hated, I'll just give you a little bit of context. First of all, the cameras can only be used in our most dangerous corridors or near schools and other vulnerable populations. You have to be going at least 11 miles an hour over the speed limit to get a ticket from the camera. The first ticket that everyone gets would be a warning ticket. There's no facial recognition technology, there's no points on your license, the ticket goes to the vehicle, just like a parking ticket, and the tickets are $50. They start at $50, and if you're low income, that cuts either in half or 80%, depending on your income level. So we think, and all, none of the money, don't get excited, you can't put any of the money into your general fund. All the revenue goes just to implementing and operating the program, and then any leftover money has to go into physical street calming on those same streets. So we have gotten a huge coalition of support behind this. For the first time, AAA sent a letter of support, and NHTSA, the National Highway Safety Traffic Board, also sent a letter of support to the governor, because in states that have done this, they've seen up to 70% decrease in crashes related to speed. So very excited to give Glendale that tool, we'll pilot it for five years, we'll refine it, or say no to it, or continue it, based on the results. AB 496 would have California phasing out the use of toxic carcinogenic chemicals and personal care products. These are chemicals that have already been banned in the EU that we find in our shampoo, our skin products, et cetera. This is a bill where we worked hand-in-hand with the cosmetics industry, who agreed that these chemicals don't belong in our makeup and our shampoo, so we're really excited to have that on the governor's desk. AB 867 is a bill to help our foster youth. Those of you who follow my legislation know that every single year we do at least one bill dedicated to uplifting foster youth, some of our most vulnerable community members who disproportionately make up the ranks of people in prisons and on the streets. This bill says that if a county, in our case, LA County, hasn't provided that youth with what they need to under the law, meaning IDs, a housing navigator, just that kind of basic support, a court can order them to keep custody of that young person, continue to support them until they can provide what they need to thrive. We're hopeful that that gets signed. AB 894 says that a developer can share parking, if there's parking that's nearby that's underutilized or not being utilized, they can enter into a contract to use that parking for their development, but you get to decide what the criteria is as a city, and whether or not you will, you know, sort of under what context, in other words, 10-year lease, 15-year lease, how much parking, that's up to you. But this opens up the opportunity for some of these empty parking lots, and quite honestly, especially post-COVID, but even before COVID, we just saw a dearth in our urban cores of underutilized or unused parking. So that's will help you use that so that we don't have to keep pouring more concrete and dig in more deep holes. AB 1059 is another bill about toxic materials. This one, I hate to tell you, but something like 30% of mattresses contain fiberglass. Fiberglass acts a lot like asbestos, if it escapes, it can cause irreparable lung scarring, cystic fibrosis, it can cause your corneal displacement and scratching, it's awful for people who are trying to recycle. This would ban the use of fiberglass in mattresses, and it also would ban some carcinogenic chemicals that are sometimes used as flame retardants. And I will love to say that Big Mattress, what I call them, the mattress industry, also is supporting this legislation, and it's had bipartisan support in the legislature, as have many of my bills. AB 1132, again, I hope you don't hate me for this, although I know the mayor will appreciate it. This continues a program that I did a few years ago, it removes a sunset on a bill I did, that caps the amount of money that municipalities can charge their residents for installing rooftop solar. It gives you a reasonable limit, but it stops what was happening with some cities where they were price gouging people just for normal rooftop solar, because I know that you guys care a lot about getting more solar out there anyway, you wouldn't have done it, but some cities did. AB 1322 continues the work that I've done to protect wildlife in California by banning difosammon, which is a second-generation anticoagulant rodenticide. So have any of you noticed coyotes, or even mountain lions, wandering around with what looks like mange, really bad mange? Have you seen dead hawks and dead owls? A lot of the times, that's because they go and they eat rats that were poisoned with this stuff, and it kills them, the mange is from internal hemorrhaging that these animals experience. It's awful, it's not necessary, we need to ban it. LA Times had an editorial today or yesterday supporting this bill, so thank you, LA Times. AB 1377, Mr. Najarian will appreciate this, this is a bill sponsored by LA Metro and by the County of LA. I chair transportation in the Assembly, and LA Metro came to me and said they were having a problem, which was that they have a lot of homeless people camping out in the subway system, and they were having trouble getting our local county homeless authority to come and count these people and offer services to them. They were saying it wasn't their job, wasn't their territory. If they're up on the sidewalk, yes, but in the subway, that's Metro's problem. This makes it clear that we expect our county homeless authorities to cooperate with transit systems up and down the state of California to take care of these folks, because that's what they do. Metro runs buses on time, they dig holes for subways, they can't stand up their own homeless authority. AB 1399 allows you to do for pets what you can already do for your baby, which is use telehealth. Believe it or not, it's against the law in California for you to take your cat to see a vet through a Zoom, just so the vet can look at them and say, hey, that's no problem, or put this on, or bring them back in a few days. This would, we worked with the Humane Society of San Diego and others, other ASPCA's, to do this bill, to open up veterinary care to a lot more people who right now can't take their pets in. Last one I'm going to mention, AB 1572 is the low-hanging fruit of water conservation. Metropolitan Water District is a sponsor of this bill, and what it says is that it's not residential, this is only for commercial, industrial, and civic use of non-functional turf, meaning turf that no one sits on, no one walks around on, you don't play ball on, just ornamental turf, so I'm talking your median strips. I'm talking grass that says, don't walk on the grass. It says that you can't, after a date certain in the future, you can't use potable water to irrigate it. If you want to use recycled water, have at it, but not drinking water. Instead, you would need to replace it with drought-resistant plants, and you can do some watering of them, they require us a lot less water, a lot less mowing and pesticides. This bill has also had a lot of really good editorials in the LA Times and others supporting it. Just moving on to funding, this year I secured almost $1 million in funding for the City of Glendale, specifically almost $1 million for the City of Glendale's Fremont Park renovation plan. I know my daughter is very excited, although she wanted me to tell you, please don't take the tube slides away. So I'm just saying, some love out there for tube slides. And I'm honored to share our, with you, who our 2023 Nonprofit of the Year was. This year, we awarded our Nonprofit of the Year to the Armenian Relief Society, a group you all know well. They are hosting a relief effort for those forcibly displaced from Artsakh, who've sought refuge in Armenia, and of course, awful situation. Hopefully, the whole world is watching what's happening, but I know that everybody's heart breaks for what's happening, and I again want to commend the City of Glendale for the work that you've done elevating this issue and also collecting money. So again, thank you for your commitment, your dedication, and all of your work and your partnership, and with that, I will pause to see if anyone has any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Najarian?
Hi, I have a question. Hi, and welcome back.
Happy to be back.
Anytime you want to take a seat. Actually, there's an empty seat tonight, if you want to see how, remind yourself how it was. On the AB 645, so the city would have to fund their cameras up front, but revenue from the tickets can go to backfill that?
That's what they are supposed to go for.
Okay.
To pay for it.
But anything extra goes to traffic calming?
In that same area, yes.
And are the judges going, is there anything directing judiciary to accept a photo ticket? Because they've sometimes been, I think that was one of the reasons for the initial demise of some of those red light cameras, because the judges weren't...
Right, so...
Due process and all that stuff.
It's a great question. So one of the problems with the red light camera program is that the timing was often a question, because making a right turn on red is legal in California. The problem was that the cameras were having trouble distinguishing what the timing was for that red, that right-hand turn. So most of the arguments were over the right-hand turn issue. Did you stop? Didn't you stop? When did it turn red? This is different. This uses LiDAR and radar that are calibrated, and again, you have to be egregiously speeding at least 11 miles an hour over the speed limit, so the technology works. You know, we know from other states, we know from lots of testing that the technology exists to do this. So people can certainly challenge, but it's going to be a lot harder, because there's not the kind of judgment call that they had to make in the old program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Satrian? Nothing?
Just a thank you. I mean, I did, I did want to pose a question on just solar in general.
Sure.
We talk about this a lot here, a lot of the programs that come out, I think, at least if I can speak for myself, is geared towards homeowners and doesn't address it for folks who are multifamily and, you know, that are renting, which is, you know, obviously the population that probably needs it most. Along with a lot of the rebate programs that are coming out for green energy and public benefit programs tend to be where you have to actually purchase it, which makes it feel like the person has to have the capital in order for them to make the purchase, and then has to navigate through a paperwork process, and then be able to get the reimbursement for it. I know that locally, we've been talking about how we help navigate that to a system where it's instant, because it not only creates issues with people that don't have the capital, but then, you know, with families who have language barriers and the general population that doesn't know how to navigate the hefty paperwork gets really left out. I'm not sure if there's anything that you know upon the state that's addressing any of these, but if you do have them, would appreciate you sharing that.
Sure, and thank you for your question and for your leadership on environmental issues, very much appreciated. There's a lot of talk about how to make all of our incentives, whether it's EV technology incentives, charging, how to make that work for people in multifamily, and how to make it work for low-income individuals. For people who are trying to install energy-saving devices who are low-income, I know that there are often higher levels of incentives that are available if you are an owner, so if you're a low-income homeowner. In terms of people living in apartments, you know, the challenge is that it's usually, you don't usually own any of that infrastructure, and so there are incentives for property owners, but then are they passing those savings down to their tenants is a whole other issue? And just legally, it's really hard to sort of say, all right, if they're saving money on their electric bill, are they passing it along to tenants if the tenants aren't, if their electric bill is bundled in to their rent, for instance? And that's a really hard thing to figure out how to compel. I will say that last year, I did a bill that would have expanded what's called the S-CHIP Program, which is a program that gives money to utilities to then do microgrids on commercial and civic buildings for resiliency. So for instance, it would allow you to do a microgrid, like a solar grid with storage on your police building, so that if you had a power outage, your police building would still have renewable power, and you could maybe use that in your grid. We do that now for the IOUs, so for PG&E and Edison, but it's not available to you as a muni. So I did a bill last year to expand that program to munis. I'm happy to say that the budgetary part of that was put into last year's budget, so there's supposed to be money there for municipal utilities to also take advantage of solar resiliency programs and microgrids, but the bill that we had that directed how that money was going to be spent did not make it to the governor's desk. But I would highly suggest that you look into that program, because it was in the budget last year. You might be able to find a way, and I see the city manager pulling out his pen to write this down, we're happy to get you the specifics of what was in the budget, and I highly suggest you, you apply for those bucks from Sacramento to get money for your own utility to be able to do that. And, you know, for those homeowners, one of the big issues, you didn't specifically ask about it, is how do you do charging, you know, for electric vehicles for people in multifamily? You know, and if, even if it's there, how do you stop a landlord from charging forward, or how do you make it available to people? Or instead, does the City of Glendale put a bunch of charging in their lots and offer at low cost to people who live in nearby apartment buildings? So there's a lot of, and there are companies looking to do charging in dense multifamily areas with newer rapid charging that lets people charge their vehicle in, you know, 10, 15 minutes. So there's a lot of focus being put on this, and a lot of state money going into it as well. So it is something that is an issue we're aware of, and I appreciate your highlighting it.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just noticed on the news that Long Beach is, you were talking about lowering the speed limits. Long Beach is, the city council is going to lower their speed limits. Now, how does that correlate with the state?
That is based on the bill that I passed, and they even mentioned that in the LA Times, it's based on AB 43, which was my high priority bill, so I named it after what was my district at the time, AB 43, some of my district 43. So they are using that bill to lower speed limits because of the issue they're having with speeding and traffic safety.
Great.
Because, and just so people understand, one of the problems is that cities in the past have been forced to continually raise their speed limits, based on what's called the 85th percentile. So it's not like those speed limits ended up being capped. Because of speeding cars, the cities are forced to raise and raise and raise their speed limits, and you end up with, soon with residential streets that are 40, 45 miles an hour, which is, you know, crazy for a street that people have to back in and out of in their cars.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for demonstrating your ability to develop and support bills that cover a plethora of issues that we're facing here in Glendale, and we do appreciate, and we're really looking forward to that speed safety system, the pilot program. And, you know, the shared parking, I remember when I was running, I was campaigning, probably in my first campaign, maybe my second campaign, but I was talking about shared parking, because there was so little parking, we were having issues, and we still are, and so I'm happy to see that, what is it, AB 894, and let's see, and I think, oh, and thank you for all the funding that you've brought to Glendale, we really appreciate the work that you've done and that you haven't forgotten us, thank you.
Can I just mention one other bill, which I was a co-author on, because I've co-authored and authored this bill now, again, for a number of years, and we finally got it to the governor's desk, and I'm very hopeful that he'll sign it. Not to get into a whole thing, but one of the problems with servicing people who are severely mentally ill and homeless is that right now, under the law, it's very difficult to place these people into a conservatorship. You know, if they're eating out of trash cans... You know, if they're eating out of trash cans, has a towel around their waist, all that you can do is put them in a 72-hour hold. And I did a bill with Catherine Barker a few years ago, and we did it several years in a row, that said that if those sane people who are severely mentally ill, if a judge says, "Yes, they're really, really sick, they can't take care of themselves, and they have an underlying health morbidity that will cause their death, untreated diabetes, untreated cancer," they can have a longer conservatorship. We were unable to pass that bill for several years. This year, I ran the bill again with Susan Eggman, who's herself a therapist. And this year, we got it to the governor's desk, and it would expand the ability to put severely mentally ill homeless individuals into a longer-term conservatorship, to allow the governor's care court process to properly work, to get people the help they need, to compel that help for them. Because in my view, a lot of these people, well, all the ones we're talking about here, they're so ill that they can't make this decision for themselves. They just can't. And if a judge determines that, they should be able to get more care than just bouncing in and out of hospital emergency rooms over and over again, which is what happens now. So I'm really hopeful that the governor signs that, and I think it will certainly help the city be able to get help for some of these people.
Thank you for that. And I know that you're running for Congressman Schiff's seat in Congress, so good luck.
Thank you.
And, and again, thank you for coming and for all this work that you've done. And I think you're, I know you're, the speed camera bill, this is your third
Fourth.
Fourth attempt.
Yeah.
Okay. And, you know, I've been watching that over the years, so I really appreciate, and it always impressed with your determination and stick-to-itiveness on these things. I think, but correct me if I'm wrong, the anticoagulant rodenticide bill is also something you brought was, either didn't make it through or it was vetoed?
Actually, we passed it, but that was the second generation rodenticides. This is first generation, so it's expanding. Because when they did the P-22 autopsy, and they've autopsied many of these animals, there's still enough anticoagulant rodenticide in them to kill them. And there's, it's still being used in a lot of scenarios. And we allow in the bill for major outbreaks, you know, for public health, but it's unfortunately still routinely put into rat poisons.
I see. So this was an expansion?
Yes.
The functional, the non-functional turf, is this the second go at that?
No, it's actually the first time, so first time's the charm with this one, I hope.
Okay, I hope so, too. So yeah, thank you for that, and we're really, you know, we've been waiting for years for the speed cameras, and really looking forward to see how that works. And I think the way you crafted the bill, you know, there really, I don't think there can be any argument, any reasonable argument against it, so.
Well, thanks, and thanks for your support, you know, on the bill as well.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you. Councilmember Kasakian is on. I don't know if he's feeling well enough and has any questions or comments? Maybe not. Okay.
Well, thank you for having me.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks again for all your work.
Yeah, take care.
Bye.
Okay. What is our next item, then?
Our next item is a proclamation designating September 2023 as Blood Cancer Awareness Month.
Okay. So we have a number of individuals from the International Myeloma, did I say that? International Myeloma Foundation, Peter Anton, Miko Santos, and Sylvia De Souza, and maybe more. I see more people. Why don't you come to the podium here, and I will read the proclamation?
Thank you, Mayor.
And maybe you can tell us a little bit more about what you do and about Blood Cancer Awareness Month and
Absolutely.
But let me, let me first read the proclamation.
Of course, thank you.
So it, it reads, "Whereas every three minutes, someone in the United States is diagnosed with a blood cancer, and that blood cancers, including leukemia, lymphoma, and multiple myeloma, combined are the third-leading cause of cancer deaths in the country, with more than 1.3 million Americans living with or in remission from a blood cancer. And whereas multiple myelomas, multiple, sorry, multiple myeloma is a cancer of the bone marrow plasma cells and is the second-most common blood cancer in the world. Every year, about 159,985 new myeloma cases are diagnosed worldwide. And whereas for Blood Cancer Awareness Month 2023, the International Myeloma Foundation's goal is to foster active and interactive participation by motivating individuals to ask questions and to educate themselves about multiple myeloma, and by encouraging them to share these learnings with their communities via social media. And whereas by educating those who have no knowledge of myeloma while engaging with individuals living with the disease, the IMF, which is the International Myeloma Foundation, the IMF, hopes to raise awareness about multiple myeloma within the broader cancer community, and to inspire the myeloma community to continue advocating for those impacted by the disease. And whereas this B.C., a Blood Cancer Awareness Month educational campaign, I'm sorry, whereas through this Blood Cancer Awareness Month educational campaign, the International Myeloma Foundation aims to educate both the general public and those living with the disease by disseminating essential information about multiple myeloma, and to eradicate the disease by inspiring people to advocate for the IMF's mission. And whereas throughout B.C.A.M., the IMF will share information about multiple myeloma based on its four founding principles: research, education, support, and advocacy, while highlighting the crucial role of fundraising in fulfilling the IMF's mission of improving the quality of life of myeloma patients while working towards prevention and a cure. Now therefore, I, Daniel Bratman, Mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaim September 2023 as Blood Cancer Awareness Month in Glendale, and call on all our citizens to create awareness, increase fundraising, and support patients affected by all types of blood cancers, including leukemia, lymphoma, myeloma, and Hodgkin's disease." That was a lot.
Well done.
So maybe you can
Thank you.
Introduce yourself and make a few comments.
Absolutely. First off, I just wanted to thank you, Mayor Bratman, of course, and esteemed council members for this proclamation. It means a whole lot to our organization and to the whole myeloma community. My name is Peter Anton. I run marketing for the International Myeloma Foundation, which we affectionately call the IMF, to make it easier not to be confused with the International Monetary Fund. And in fact, I am privileged to be here today to accept this honor. And our president and CEO, Yalik Baru, would have loved to have been here himself today, but he's traveling abroad at a conference. But he just wanted to send his utmost gratitude and thanks to everybody here today. But everything you already mentioned is a lot of what I would walk through. One of the interesting things also is that Yalik Baru, our president and CEO, was diagnosed 27 years ago with the disease, when he was 25 years old, and he's living very well with the disease today, as many are. Although the disease is incurable at this time, it's, it's very much, there's a lot of opportunities to take care of people, to live well with the disease. So there's a lot of great work going on from our organization and others in the space, and we just are excited to be able to get that awareness out there. I mean, that's the most important thing for us, because the best treatment outcomes happen when people are diagnosed early. And that's the difficulty with what's considered a rare disease, is bringing forth that awareness needed to make sure that people understand, you know, that they can be diagnosed, that they know the symptoms and know the issues. So not just patients and care partners, but healthcare providers. So really getting the healthcare community to understand, and especially in underprivileged areas. So we thank you very much. If anybody wants to find out more about our organization, you can always go to myeloma.org. We have several different social channels, which we use to amplify awareness about the disease on Facebook at facebook.com/myeloma, and IMF Myeloma on Twitter and Instagram, and of course, on LinkedIn. So it's with heartfelt gratitude that I say thank you on behalf of our organization for this proclamation.
Well, thank you. And I'll bring this down, and we can take a photo if you'd like.
Thank you, of course.
I think we do. We have a whole row of photographers there.
Thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
For the work.
Really appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, what is our next item, then?
Next item is consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Okay, and before I take a motion, I did want to pull the Glendale Water and Power Power Source Disclosure Report, item 4C, for separate presentation.
I would like
Anything else?
I would like to pull 4A, just to make a comment.
4A, on the minutes?
Minutes at the last meeting.
All right.
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, let's have a roll call then on the balance.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Bratman?
Yes. Let's start with 4A, and then we'll go to the presentation by GWP.
I'm not sure if this requires for us to actually agendize and go through a council process, but one of the things I've noticed, I mean, we do this a lot as a council, there's a motion, and then we add things to the motion when we're approving it, whether it's adding things when we're approving an RFP, or, for example, on the report on status of women last week. But the minutes actually, just read that the motion was passed with additional feedback, and those, those markers for that feedback that were supposed to be part of the motion are not included in the minutes. I think for the sake of transparency, I would like to see that these are actually included when we're passing a motion, and I don't know if this requires a council action, or it's just something that we bring up. And I think I want to tie that to also the agendas for, I know our assistant city manager reads off items that are on future agenda for city council meetings, but there's no space that council residents and even council members can go, aside from the reports that we receive from the city manager, to see, you know, what's coming up. I know the city of Burbank, for example, has it on their website where they list, and there is a disclaimer that notes that items can change and things can move, but it gives the community an opportunity to see what's coming up in the future. And so, you know, if our city manager can address, the first, or city attorney can address the
Sure, maybe, maybe I can address it, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So generally speaking, our minutes are action minutes, meaning they're basically record the action that was taken. With respect to that motion that you're referring to, with regard, I think, to the commission on status of women item, the motion was to note and file with additional council member feedback, and it was a generic motion. When there's a motion made that's very specific that we want these conditions based as part of the action that's taken, whether it's approving an RFP or a contract, and it's very specific, they're made part of the motion, then those get reported in the, recorded in the motion. And usually, even then, the motion itself, the minutes do not reflect every condition that was, that was in the motion. The motion reflects the action taken. So, and our suggestion then is if there's a specific direction that the council's seeking, or a council member would like to see as part of that motion, then you make it as part of the motion, and we will make sure to document that and put it into the motion, and that gets reflected as part of the record. But when the motion is to note and file and with additional feedback provided, that's just a general direction to council that they'll be following up and looking, looking at some of the comments that were made related to that matter, and there's no specific direction.
So I, I think that's where I find issue with it, because I think a lot of times, and I'm not just speaking for myself, we've had situations where I walked away thinking that, you know, I made the motion, and I specifically, for example, just on this item, because it's recent, I'm going to bring it up, I specifically asked, do I need to create a new motion to include and incorporate the comments that we had made? It was, I believe, Councilmember Devine, myself, and Councilmember Kasakian all had different points, and we said the comments that were made to be included within that. And you said, "No, just, you know, move this motion, and then you will add the feedback to it." And so I walked away from that with the understanding that it wasn't just general feedback we were providing, but we had given specific direction to staff in how we want to move forward. I know that that's been the case for RFPs and other items. And so I want to get to a place where we're not going back and looking at videos to see what happened, but when we are approving minutes, for example, I want to be able to look and say, "Yes, this is exactly what I voted for," not then have a debate whether or not that was just general feedback, or if it was, you know, part of the motion that we passed with. And I know that we've had this conversation on various topics, at least for the last year, where I think the reach codes that Mayor Bratman had brought up were one of those things. And so I'm just trying to get to a place where there's transparency in what was passed, and when I'm able to, when I'm looking at minutes, along with our residents, there's clarity in what that decision was, not just generic, like we passed it.
I mean, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Then my suggestion going forward is as we're making motions, make them as specific as you would like them. Generally, and I guess I'll, you know, apologize for that one, because I, my understanding is that having worked on these issues previously, when it's general or generic feedback, it's just providing those comments as part of the overall record, not making a specific condition as part of the motion. So we will be mindful the next time this comes up to, if council has very specific direction they'd like to include. I would, I don't think necessarily we need to do anything else to change the process other than when, when we are, when these motions are being made, making it clear that you'd like specific feedback. I think one of the issues is there, on a topic like that, whereas it's, you're hearing a report on a multitude of items, if we were then to, to document all the feedback, then we need to make sure you're all, you're all okay with it. But again, that's something we can certainly do going forward.
I think that also raises to, when we are making, it's not just for note and file, but when, you know, we're the ones that are kind of coming up with that additional motion, and I think it's helpful to have that in writing in the minutes at the next meeting, because at the end of the day, aside from Councilmember Najarian, none of us are attorneys, right? And so I'm always kind of hesitant on, did I phrase this correctly for the motion to be what we intended it to be? So I think that addresses that, and maybe if you're able to send us verbiage that we should be using when we do, when we do want that before taking a vote.
Well, it'll have to occur at the meeting when you, when you want to make the motion. We'll have to, we will, I'll certainly help you, whoever's, whoever's here will certainly help you to phrase that motion.
Okay. And then for the future council meeting?
Sure, Councilmember Kasakian, we can definitely look into it. It sounds like a feasible idea to implement, with a disclaimer that it's subject to change, and this list is tentative.
Right, okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to
Councilmember Kasakian.
I'd like to add my voice of support to what Councilmember Asadrian brought up in regards to the forecast agenda. It's something that I've brought up before during my time on this council. I think that the further out we can project what is expected to be coming forward, the better. And even if things change, I think the residents will understand that, but they should have a clear idea about three meetings out, what is coming up. So I support that suggestion, and I hope that we can actually implement it.
So is this something that we need to agendize, or is this something that staff will?
No, council member, mayor, we don't need to
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So let's take a vote, just so we can pass the minutes, and then we can go on to the other end of the roll call.
Is it motioned? Was it moved?
Is there, yeah.
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Bratman?
Yes. Okay, so we have item 4C now?
Item 4C is Glendale Water and Power, regarding Glendale Water and Power Source Disclosure Report for calendar year 2022. One motion to note and file the GWP Power Source Disclosure Report for calendar year 2022.
Okay. And, and I'll just say, the reason I wanted this separately reported is because I think it's of public interest, how we're doing with our portfolio and moving towards more renewable energy and zero-carbon energy. So that was really my intent. So, Mr. Galani?
Thank you, Mayor Bratman. As you know, the power content label, as a way of introduction, GW
it's of public interest, how we're doing with our portfolio and moving towards more renewable energy and zero carbon energy. So that was really my intent. So, Mr. Galanian?
Thank you, Mayor Botman. As you know, the power content label, as a way of introduction, GWP submits this report to council on an annual basis, usually in fall. This is for the California Energy Commission's Power Source Disclosure Program. As you indicated, it provides a view into GWP's power supply and how it compares to California's grid average. And this will enhance the transparency of its power supply portfolio. With that, I'll turn it over to Chi Valdez. I believe her title is Integrated Resource Program Manager...
Planning Administrator.
Administrator, to delve into more details of this plan.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good evening, Mayor Botman, and members of the city council. Yeah, my name is Chi Valdez. I'm the Integrated Resource Planning Administrator for Glendale Water and Power. So tonight, we're going to present our Power Source Disclosure Report for council to note and file. So the, sorry about that. Okay. So the Power Source Disclosure is actually a program under Assembly Bill 1110, and this is being managed by the California Energy Commission. So this requires entities like Glendale, who is offering electric services in California, to disclose accurate, reliable, and simple-to-understand information on the sources of energy and the associated emissions of greenhouse gases that are used to provide electric services to its customers. So under this program, reported power supply sources are accounted and independently verified by a certified auditor for completeness and accuracy. So by June 1st, that's the deadline to submit the power source disclosures to the CEC. Then the CEC summarizes this report from all entities in California and prepares this, what they call the power content label. It is a standardized and simple-to-understand form that is being referred to here in this program. So the auditor's report, together with the city council's motion, will be submitted to the CEC by September 30th, followed by mailing the PCL or the power content label to customers and making it publicly available to everyone by October 1st on our website. It is important to note, is highlighted in here, that the power content label or the Power Source Disclosure Program is not the same as that of the Renewable Portfolio Standard Program. The percentages may not exactly match due to some nuances in the methodology between two programs. For example, the power content label is only looking at a one-year period, while the RPS program is actually looking at a compliance period of three to four years. However, it is a good indication, the power content label is a good indication of our RPS position. So here's our power content label. So in 2022, our eligible renewable is 35.2%. And then including our large hydro and nuclear, GWP has actually achieved a power supply of about 60% GHG free. So that includes the eligible renewable energy, plus large hydroelectric and nuclear energy. So comparing this with our 2021 PCL, we're about 0.1% lower than the 2022. There's a correction that we want to make in our report. It's not 0.01, it's 0.1, so it's a tenth of a percentage. So we actually declined from 35.3 to 35.2. This is mainly due to the delayed commercial operation of our Star Peak geothermal project. And if it's not for that delay, we're estimating our power content label to be at 38%. Yeah, and it's also important to note that last year, in 2022, our retail sales was actually 5% higher than that of 2021. So that means that the denominator is bigger, so it makes our percentage a little lower. But the good news in here is that, for the first time, we see solar in our power content label. So this is because the Townsite Solar Project, which is actually what we called before as the Skylar Project, they started delivering solar from this contract. So we went from 0 to 15.6%, which also reduces the biomass and bio waste from that portfolio from 14.1% to 4.6%. And despite of the reduction, the slight reduction that we have in our renewable, our greenhouse gas emission intensity was actually lower in 2022 than in 2021. Okay. So over the past several years, we've actually made significant strides in supplying the city with renewable and zero carbon resources. So our city has invested in wind, geothermal, hydropower, solar, and biogas projects. GWP is committed to continue to maintain and expand this progress. So this is our progress from 2011 to 2022. 2011 is actually the first year the RPS program was implemented. So that red line is the RPS goals, and those bars are actually our eligible renewable resources and zero carbon resources that are non-renewable. So that means these are the large hydroelectrics and nuclear projects. So this is our attempt to compare our power mix with our neighboring cities. Unfortunately, only Pasadena was able to provide us the information. Both Burbank and LA declined to share until they have officially published theirs. They haven't published theirs yet. So for Pasadena, their eligible renewable, they're at 27.7% or a total of 40% if we include nuclear and large hydro resources. Their carbon intensity is about 45% higher than Glendale's. Yeah, we made, we may have made significant progress, but meeting the future renewable and clean energy goals is not easy. So aside from the delays that we're experiencing with the projects, the regulatory changes, such as accelerating compliance period under SB 1020, makes compliance a challenge. The rising costs of renewable energy due to soaring prices in materials, shipping, labor, and interest rates. There is also, yeah, there is this Inflation Reduction Act. However, developers currently are reluctant to lower PTA price due to uncertainties concerning eligibility requirements. The energy shortfalls from our renewable resources. So for example, like what we said here, Whitegrass is only delivering 85% of the guaranteed generation, and the Star Peak project is only at 70%. We also have some concerns about this fractional brown or unspecified energy deliveries. This is due to some NERC scheduling and tagging constraints. So there's a rounding to whole numbers for the tag, so which means that there would be GHG obligations for some of our renewable energy deliveries. And of course, limited transmission means limited ability to import large-scale renewable resources. When it comes to load variability, this actually poses a challenge when relying heavily on intermittent renewable resources. So EV charging and building electrification road, load can be variable as well, leading to fluctuations in energy demand. So basically, matching our supply and demand becomes more complex as load pattern changes. So to address these concerns and meet our clean energy goals, a holistic approach is necessary. So this involves conducting, you know, like, clean energy studies, including the DR studies that we're having right now, and the Integrated Resource Plan. We also need to incentivize distributed energy resources, such as demand response, energy efficiency, those rooftop solar and storage for load shifting and peak reduction. We need to continuously collaborate among the other SCAPA participants for long-term renewable PPAs, and improve those contract terms to ensure that all the operational issues are actually being addressed, such as what we, I mentioned earlier, which is the brown energy component. We review and validate the assumptions used in creating load forecasts. Now, we need to incorporate those local solar forecasts, as well as the ability to basically predict those EV charging patterns. And lastly, explore various technological advancements, such as green hydrogen, long-term storage, and carbon capture. So that concludes our short presentation on power content label, power source disclosure.
Okay. Well, thank you. I don't know if any of my colleagues have questions?
I just have, please. Thank you, Mayor. But as far as our clean energy and the comparison of Glendale and the state of California, we are still ahead of the state in clean, in clean energy, correct?
That is correct. So we are at 60%, and 59.9%, which is about 60%, and California, if I'm...
54.
Yeah, about 54%. Yeah, thank you so much, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And tell me the difference between eligible hydroelectric and large hydroelectric?
Yeah. So the eligible hydro, eligible hydroelectric, these are the small run-of-river type of hydro plants, and the large hydro is like Hoover. So they're not categorized as renewable, but they fall into clean energy.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any others? No? Well, thank you for spelling that out. I mean, I'm glad to see that, well, I'm not glad to see that Pasadena's only at 40%, but I'm glad that we're, you know, 60% is of kind of non-carbon, I guess you would say, is reasonable. But I guess what concerns me is if you look over this period of time from, you know, 2016, we were higher in 2016 than we are today, and we've kind of bounced around, but what I don't see is, you know, this, we would like to see a trend line where we're trending higher. And it kind of, if you just stand back and look at it, it looks pretty much flat, right? We were at, what, 65% in 2016, and now we're at 60%. And we do have a goal to get to 100% by 2035, so we have a lot of work to do. So that's, that's all. I know you're working on it. I know there are things that have kind of gotten in the way, like our geothermal, two-geothermal projects. But, you know, I guess I just would like to have us all keep an eye on the fact that from 2016 to today, we really are kind of, don't see any real progress, looking at these numbers. Maybe below the surface, but above the surface, it's not, it's not visible, so. In any case, did you want to move the item?
I'll move the item.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. So what is next?
Next, our city council and staff comments.
Okay. Who would like to begin?
Devine.
Councilmember Devine?
I just, I have a sad note to report. The environmental and sustainability advocates lost a supporter this weekend. Glenn Webb passed away. For those of you who do remember him or don't remember him, Glenn would attend council with volumes of his research and ideas so that we can, you know, meet our, it's funny, we're talking about meeting our renewable and clean energy goals, and that was his, I think, his main goal in life. And so I'd like to extend my deepest sympathies and condolences to Lynn, his wife, and their family. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, that is a shock. I did not know that. He was a good friend. He was somebody who really, really cared and did a huge amount of work trying to push us in the right direction. Oh, wow. Okay. I'm shocked. Okay. Did you have anything else? Okay. Councilmember Kasakian? No? Okay. Councilmember Janyan, no? Councilmember Kasakian? Is he there? He doesn't have anything?
Here, but I'm trying to conserve my voice and my energy, so I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think everybody is, I hope, aware of the catastrophe going on in Artsakh. I didn't know if you would, you know, I mean, I, I'm not as close to the facts as some, but it does, it's a terrible situation, and I think we all feel at a loss for what we can do. But I think we should be thinking about, you know, what we can be, what we can be asking our government to do in terms of sanctions and calling out war crimes and putting the Aliyev regime on notice for what certainly appears to be an ethnic cleansing that, anyway, reminds me of the 90s, was it the 90s in Bosnia, where we had just, you know, where the US government kind of was asleep at the wheel and with catastrophic results. So I didn't want to let the comments period go without, without mention of Glendale's obvious, deep feelings and concern for the people in Artsakh, for their families, for their friends, many, many residents here who have family and friends who are trying to flee, or perhaps unable to flee, or are refugees now and trying to develop a new life for themselves. So, Councilmember Kasakian?
Since you brought it up, I do want to maybe give some specific highlights. What is happening is absolute genocide. You, the Azerbaijani forces have actually moved into the towns, one of which is Marduni. All of the residents from our sister city have now been moved out of their homes. There are thousands of families that are in the capital that are basically homeless. There are thousands more that are trying to flee to safety. I understand that Samantha Powers made a visit to Armenia to announce USAID for humanitarian relief, which I think seeing the numbers is, you know, to say disappointed, to say heartbroken, and kind of insulting to what is happening on the ground would be an absolute understatement. For those community members, you know, I've said this time and again, this isn't just an Armenian issue, but I think for some of us, it is personal. Azerbaijan has released a list of people, including community leaders, who they want to try in Azerbaijan, which is the same thing that they did during the Armenian genocide of 1915, gathering all the leaders first. One of those individuals is one of my best friends, who's a US citizen, who is stuck there. My cousin's children are in the army there. So when we talk about personal, it's personal. My dad's, for those that don't know, my dad's side of the family is in Armenia. They are, they are and have been moving into Armenia. This is no longer just about our... This is no longer just about Artsakh. And so I'm going to say this again, like I do every Tuesday, but for all of our community organizations and community leaders who don't have an Armenian-American background, your voice and support, I think, means the world to our community here. For every person that talks about human rights but has remained silent, and it's not just a social media post, it's about putting resources and efforts that we may in other places, but somehow, when it comes to Armenia and Artsakh, we don't get the same. And so I know we have created a fund. The whole purpose of that fund was to encourage our organizations and institutions in Glendale to help with this. And it's also a reminder specifically for me of the humanitarian relief efforts that came during 1915, which saved over 2 million refugees and over 162,000 orphans during the Armenian genocide, one of those orphans being my great-grandmother. And so for those that don't know, that was the first US congressionally sanctioned humanitarian relief effort, which paved the way for the Peace Corps. It was also the first national ad campaign. And so if you look at, I invite you to visit America, we thank you dot com, you will see their fact sheets state by state of what the American people did in 1915. And it makes me very sad to see that over 100 years later, we see a lot more silence. So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there are no further comments, any staff comments? No? Okay, thank you. So what is next?
Next, our community event announcements.
Okay. We have two cards. We'll start with Rafi Bartanian.
Thank you. On behalf of the City of Glendale's poet laureate program, I'm grateful for the opportunity to share this invitation to anyone in our regional community who wishes to explore and share their own creative process during our second workshop reading on Saturday, October 7th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Spar Heights Community Center in the Verdugo Room. I'll be there alongside our featured poets, Teresa May Chook, who was the Altadena poet laureate from 2018 to 2020, Jen Chang, who is the current poet laureate of West Hollywood, and Tina Demirjan, an accomplished poet and workshop leader who runs the, helps run the Artful Conversations series. During the workshop reading, we'll hear work from our featured poets, explore craft during a panel discussion, and embark on a workshop for participants to generate poetry and share their writing. The theme of our second workshop reading is digging in presence of the present. We'll be thinking about what it means to create, engage, and live in this current moment. Of course, these have been trying times. Armenians are again facing genocide in Artsakh. Agents of hate are harassing upstanding citizens in our community right here in Glendale and nationwide. And yet, despite these heinous acts, we witness the transcendent human spirit of decency, dignity, and common sense embodied by our educators, relief workers, and so many rays of light who shine through the darkness. And so we will have much to think about and write about at our upcoming workshop reading on Saturday, October 7th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Spar Heights Community Center. The event is free and open to the public with light refreshments. All levels of experience are welcome, and you're encouraged to register. We intend for our third workshop reading to take place on Saturday, January 13th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, with a thematic focus on finding futures, the promise and perils of the path ahead. And finally, we invite everyone to submit their poetry by mid-January for consideration in a print anthology we're preparing to represent a year of creative expression in Jewel City. To learn more about how you can submit your poetry about the workshop readings and other poetry activities, you can visit the recently launched website, eGlendaleLAC.org/poetlaureate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next announcement from Alan Durham.
Mayor Botman, welcome back, members of the council. It's my pleasure to announce a free outdoor film screening this Saturday, September 30th, at the Brand Park. It's the 100th anniversary of Harold Lloyd's 1923 classic silent film comedy, Safety Last. It's free, no tickets are needed, the gates open at 5:30, the program begins at 7:00. Bring a picnic, blankets, folding chairs, there will be free popcorn, and live musical accompaniment. Safety Last will be introduced by Harold Lloyd's granddaughter, Suzanne Lloyd, and a rare 1923 Coco the Clown cartoon will also be shown. This event is being presented by the Alex Film Society, Retro Format Silent Films, the Glendale Historical Society, Brand Associates with generous support, from the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association, and Glendale's Community Service and Parks Department. For those who don't know, Harold Lloyd was one of the three greatest silent film comedians in addition to Charlie Chaplin and Buster Keaton. Harold Lloyd and his films were extraordinarily popular throughout the 1920s. Safety Last is his most famous thrill comedy. The last third of the film has Harold reluctantly climbing up the side of a 12-story building in downtown LA. You need to remember that in 1923, there were no special effects available at all, not even rear screen projection. In Safety Last, Harold Lloyd, he may have been on multi-story sets built dangerously close to the edge of building rooftops in downtown LA, but he was always as high off the ground as it appears. And the streets you see below are the actual streets he was climbing above. Even more extraordinary is that Harold Lloyd's right thumb and forefinger were blown off in a 1919 accident when a prop bomb actually exploded in his hand. For the rest of his career, he wore a prosthetic glove with a false thumb and forefinger inserted, but he still did most of his stunts with only three fingers on his right hand. So please attend, it's a great film for children and adults alike. And for those who'd like to know more about Harold Lloyd, there's a free 90-minute documentary available on YouTube called Harold Lloyd, the Third Genius, and it's well worth watching. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'll be there. What is our next item?
Our next item is adoption of ordinances, a community development regarding ordinance extending by an additional one-year interim urgency ordinance 5996 prohibiting issuance of entitlements and/or permits for developments with new or converted drive-through waiting lanes in the city and declaring the urgency thereof. That's introduced by Divine 91223.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
So, Mr. Mayor, I must recuse myself due to an interest in a company that has applied for...
Would be impacted by...
Would be impacted by the adoption of this ordinance, so I'm just stepping out.
Okay.
I'll move the ordinance.
Uh, wait.
There's no other, oh, you have a card?
We do, we do have a card.
Wait.
Two cards. Two cards. And, Mr. Galanian, was there anything you wanted to say to tee this up?
No, Mr. Mayor, we don't have a presentation per se. As was written to the record, this was introduced by Councilmember Divine two, Tuesdays ago. Mr. Calvert is available if you have any questions, or Mr. Garcia.
Okay, I will just invite the speakers up, starting with, I hope I get this right, Tony Papa Vasilou. You're going to have to help me with this one.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you today. I'm here today to speak with you regarding the temporary ordinance impacting all existing and operating drive-throughs located within the city of Glendale. I stand before you as a concerned owner of a family business, Troy's Burgers, that was, that has thrived and called Glendale its home for over four decades. Our business has survived recession and most recently, a global pandemic. Our drive-through restaurant has historically served as a gathering place for community members seeking a quick and affordable meal. During the global pandemic, our business was deemed essential due to its designation as a drive-through. This allowed us to provide food to all community members who were concerned about their health or had a compromised immune system, yet needed a warm and affordable meal. Thus, speaking from firsthand experience, drive-through community, I mean, drive-throughs continue to be a necessity and memory to our community members. This ordinance is, with this ordinance in place, the city will experience a substantial drop in revenue. Drive-through restaurants generate 30 to 50% more revenue than non-drive-through restaurants. This decrease not only impacts sales tax, but also property tax when the building is sold. Because drive-through operators generally substantially more business than a non-drive-through operator, the non-drive-through operator has a decreased threshold in what the, what they call afford, I'm sorry, therefore, in what they can afford in rent, which directly impacts the valuation upon sale. Therefore, I urge the city council to amend the existing ordinance to exclude permitted existing and operating drive-throughs from losing their designated property right to operate as a drive-through in the event the existing tenant vacates. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, could you elaborate on that point?
Yeah, that's fine. You can, you can take it, take a seat. I just, because I, is, I was not aware that it would impact existing drive-through locations.
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. The way it's written, it applies to new or converted, or new, or existing buildings that are proposing to convert to a drive-through, but they would not apply to existing drive-throughs with vested rights.
And if an existing drive-through, if that, if that establishment were sold?
Wouldn't, and again, those, those rights, those property rights run with the land. I think the only, the only scenario where it could, property owner could lose his vested rights is if that use is abandoned, which is something that happens under municipal code when the use ceases to exist for, I can't remember if it's 12 months or six, 12 months. So if the use ceases to exist for 12 months, they may lose their vested right to continue. But short of that, it wouldn't apply to any existing uses.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, because I was confused.
And this is, this is a, an extension for a study.
Correct. It's just...
It's a study, it's not a complete disillusionment of all drive-throughs. There will be drive-throughs more than likely in our city, it's just that right now, you're studying the impacts, where they should go, geographics, et cetera, correct?
Ultimately, that'll be up to the council, but this particular ordinance just freezes the status quo and would not permit new or converted drive-throughs during the period that we're studying it. That's correct.
It's a study, okay. Study period.
Okay. Next speaker is Brian Zentmeyer.
Mayor Botman, members of council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. As I understand it, the way that the motion is written, the extension, it's sort of a foregone conclusion because you, you don't have the staff report generated yet. So I wouldn't ask you to, to vote against something or you don't have all the information available yet, but I just wanted to come and speak on behalf of property owners who may have a drive-through in development. It is just a study, and we understand that the standards will be amended and in all likelihood, we'll have drive-throughs in the future, but time kills deals. And we've been studying this now for 12 months, and we would urge you to not study it for another 12 months. We would urge you to direct staff to take all available resources to, to conclude your report as quickly as possible, because it does have material impact on, on projects that are in the pipeline. And we sort of are familiar with the history of what brought this ordinance about, and I understand that there are probably places in Glendale where they are not appropriate to build new drive-throughs. And I'm sure that the amended development standards will address that. But I think we're in the suburban north corridor, and we feel that there are sites that are totally appropriate, and we just ask that you not continue to, because it does have a lasting and material impact on us, and we just ask that you conclude your studies as quickly as possible. I heard on September 12th that the ordinance was presented as up to 12 months, and that if staff concluded earlier, then you might revisit the item earlier. And we would just encourage you to do that with all haste. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you know, I was going to say that, I think we discussed that, that as soon as staff is finished with the report, you would bring it back, and it doesn't necessarily have to be in 12 months. It could be in four months, or five months, or six months, but it doesn't, it's up to 12. So hopefully, staff will bring that back as, as quickly as you can.
Do we have a rough ETA for that?
Mayor Botman, members of the council, not quite yet. We are fairly confident that we can beat that one-year timeline, though.
Okay.
And just to...
I would hope so.
Yeah, just to add to what Mr. Calvert said, it's not just our own staff, because they have, they're in the process of finalizing a contract with a traffic study consultant who will have to do the brunt of the work. So it's not just our own staff, but we'll push them to finish it up as soon as possible.
But I think we do hear, Mr. Zentmeyer, I know you've written a number of times, and we, we understand that time, time is money, and we will, I'm sure staff will do everything it can to conclude this, this work and bring this to council for a final decision.
So if I may, I'll go ahead and move the ordinance.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadryan?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian? Mayor Botman?
Yes. Very good. Next item, please.
Next is, again, an adoption of an ordinance, community development regarding ordinance extending by 10 months and 15 days interim urgency ordinance number 6009 prohibiting issuance of entitlement and/or permits for establishment of new or replacement retail users selling firearms or ammunition and declaring the urgency thereof. That's also introduced by Divine 91923.
Okay. And do we have any cards on this item?
We do not.
I'll move the item.
Okay.
Get him a second.
Second?
A second.
Motion and, well, we have a motion and a second already. Let's move forward with the roll call.
Councilmembers Asadryan?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. So this passes as, as an urgency ordinance?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
And it goes into effect...
Immediately.
Immediately. Okay, thank you. Okay, on to action items. What's, what's our first action?
Action item A, Public Works Regarding Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. One motion approving revisions to the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Botman, members of the city council. The last time that we updated or changed the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program was in 2018. And recently, in the last couple of years, there have been requests from the community members and city council members for consideration of installation of all-way stop controls at intersections as traffic calming measures. And after review and analysis by staff, they recommend additional intersection assignments as well as all-way stop controls on local and collector's streets to be integrated into the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. With that, I'll ask Pastor Casanova, our traffic engineer, to walk you through the details of these additions.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Mayor Botman and members of the city council, this presentation, this is a brief presentation regarding recommended revisions to the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. The program dates back to 1996, when it was initially approved and adopted by the city council. Revisions were made in 2004 and then 2018 that included reduction of daily traffic volume criteria and incorporation... That included reduction of daily traffic volume criteria and incorporating special considerations for schools and park zones. Today's staff is here to outline recommended new revisions to the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program that include adding always stop controls to the program's traffic calming measures toolkit. These new revisions address concerns and requests from the community and City Council to develop a more flexible approach in the approval and application of always stop controls in the city. Public Works staff conducted detailed research and review of the state of California standards outlined in the California Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices, as well as practices used by other cities. These findings, the findings of this research identified the flexibility of using engineering judgment to modify the traffic control right-of-way assignments at intersections by way of stop controls in targeting the reduction of accidents by the use of these stop controls and prioritizing pedestrian and bicycle safety. The City of Los Angeles has adopted and implemented additional always stop control policies to supplement those already listed in the California standards. Staff has reviewed these policies and confirmed that they are based on sound engineering judgment and implementations have been observed to effectively improve safety and calm traffic by assigning additional right-of-way at intersections, particularly those on locals and collector's streets with demonstrated patterns of excessive speeds. This is a list of nine criteria used in the City of Los Angeles Always Stop Control Policy that are proposed to be incorporated into the Glendale Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. These policies allow for additional engineering judgment to be used and allow for more flexibility in the approval of always stop controls on local and collector's streets. Staff understands that there's a need for always stop controls and is looking to bridge the gap between the more stringent state of California requirements and the needs of the community to prioritize pedestrians, bicycles, and other vulnerable roadway users. This policy again has been used by the City of Los Angeles and is a good fit for the traffic calming needs within the City of Glendale. While the listed criteria allows more flexibility in the use of engineering judgment, streets will still have to meet other criteria in the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program to assure that streets do not become over-cluttered with stop signs. Oh, I apologize. It's still here. Examples of additional flexibility include, if we look at item number one, the stop signs patterns, that allows for consideration of spacing between controlled intersections in the engineering study. Long spacing between controlled intersections on local and collector's streets can be a contributing factor to excessive speeds. The new policy allows for the installation of always stop controls to reduce that unimpeded distance and provide additional right-of-way assignment at these, at the intersection level. The second example is a consideration of special facilities that are known to generate high volumes of vulnerable roadway user, roadway users such as schools, parks, libraries, senior centers and hospitals. Always stop controls can be considered for intersections that would be less than one block from the facility being studied. Also noteworthy are that the minimum traffic count hours that are included in the MUTCD guidelines would be reduced from eight to six hours. And the collision history threshold criteria in the MUTCD would also be reduced to better align with the traffic calming goals in the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program and increase that prioritization of pedestrians and bicycles in the neighborhoods that they, that they are in. This is a list of the existing traffic calming measures already in the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Toolkit and the addition of always stop controls shown in red. And as we can see, there's various tools that we already have that include the radar trailers, the truck restrictions. And there's also tools that include diverters at intersections, curb extensions or bumpouts, as well as traffic circles. And staff has worked closely with community members because the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program is a community-driven plan. And as an example, more recently, over this past year, we worked closely with the Adams Street neighborhood in developing several options. Those options included the review of, of temporary or pilot traffic circles to be able to implement the programs swiftly, moving towards more permanent improvements and having community meetings to, to inform the community of these options. In, in those cases, these options were not the selected, um, the selected traffic calming measure for their community. And staff went out and, again, with the flexibility of the existing Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, developed and piloted a program that included a combination of rumble strips and, and, and raised pavement markers that vehicles would drive over to command attention of the existing speed radar signs, speed limit signs, and, and information for the driver. This was piloted. It was developed by the Department of Public Works, run through the community. We received consensus and moved forward with it. Unfortunately, as, as, as you may have heard, the community did not immediately realize that there was going to be so loud. So Public Works reacted to that, heard the community, and, and removed that pilot program. So really, the takeaway is that the existing Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program does offer that flexibility to work with the community and evaluate different options. And we are here today to respectfully recommend to the city that the City Council approve and adopt the addition of always stop controls into the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, Traffic Calming Toolkit. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I don't have a question. Well, I do have a question. When you say always stop signs, you're referring to four-way stop signs?
Mayor Brotman, Councilmember Divine, yes, that is correct. Members of the council.
Okay. And you are going to put this four-way stop sign program in the, and I can't read my handwriting. Is it Sheffield in Adams Hill? What's the name of it?
It is Schofield.
Schofield and Adams. Is that the name of the other streets?
That's correct. That would be a perfect candidate.
Yes. And that's, that's a, an, a site where they've been screaming for a stop sign because LA, I guess, has stop signs on their side of this area and people are speeding up and down at Adams Hill.
Councilmember Divine, that is correct. And that prompted staff to investigate, reach out to City of Los Angeles. It took a while to get the information from the city, but once we did, staff thoroughly evaluated and, and that's what we're here today to present, to present to the City Council.
Great. Thank you very much. Good job. Good job.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have some questions. So back in nineteen ninety-six, I was on the, I think I was chairman of the TPC when we went through this whole traffic calming discussion, developing the toolkit. And we specifically omitted stop signs as a method of traffic calming. There were several negatives to them. Some, and I think you mentioned, some noise, some, I think, a false sense of security for pedestrians who believe they're protected by a stop sign and don't pay attention and just walk across the street. What has changed since then? I mean, it was clear that stop signs were not a, a valid traffic calming measure according to the, I guess they were federal standards or industry, national industry standards. What's, why stop signs all of a sudden?
Yes. Thank you for your question, Councilmember Najarian. Mayor Brotman, members of the City Council. Councilmember Najarian. The, the California MUTCD has specific outlines for always stop controls. And as noted in the staff report and in the presentation, we highlighted the assignment of right-of-way. So in reviewing the City of Los Angeles policy, the approach that they've taken, and, and it's a sound engineering judgment approach, is to use the general use of stop signs in assigning right-of-way at an intersection when it's needed. The California MUTCD does allow the consideration of speed and when, when reviewing when right-of-way assignment is needed. So in staff's research of looking at the LADOT policy, looking at our Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, the LADOT policy appears to be a good fit for some of the needs that we have in the city, particularly on those streets that have demonstrated speeds or patterns of higher speeds on local, community collectors and so forth, but that are also on emergency response routes such as Adams Street, where we are limited to the traffic calming measures that we can use such as speed humps and other devices that would impact emergency response. So that would be the best fit in, in answer to your question. Reviewing the LADOT policy and looking at these needs that have developed over the years of those streets that, that really need something and, and staff is limited to what we can deploy there.
So you're saying speed, and there's a difference between assignment of right-of-way and speed. Those are two nuanced issues. But leaving that aside, so you're saying that in an Adams Hill situation, speed humps are not appropriate because it would delay emergency response? And the stop sign can be bypassed without stopping? Is, was that the point you were making or what was it? I didn't follow exactly what you were, how speed humps were juxtaposed with the stop sign issue.
Yes, Councilmember Najarian, that is correct. At, at the streets that are on emergency response routes, we're, staff is required to reach out to fire department to ask them if, if speed humps or speed lumps, which are identified in the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, could be considered. Some routes, they just cannot. And, and so based on that, we're not able to proceed with those. With a stop sign, that would have an, a, an effect to the speeding. We've seen that with the LADOT policy. And, and that's what we heard you present.
So with some of the other items in the Traffic Calming Toolkit, we required a community input. There would be a petition, speed humps, for instance. A petition, and I think there was like a seventy-five percent requirement for signatures to initiate a study for speed humps. Are we gonna say that there's anything like that for a four-way stop? Or can that just be, can a council member say, I think we need a, a four-way stop there? And then staff goes and does that regardless of community sentiment? How's that gonna work?
Yes, Councilmember Najarian, this, this traffic calming measure would still be part of the traffic calming program. So it would still have to meet the other requirements such as the, the minimum speed, the volume, as well as the petition.
Not slope, though. I, I know speed humps have, have slope, volume, speed. You won't get that, you won't need a slope restriction for a four-way stop, I presume.
That is correct. The slope requirement is very, is specific to the speed humps.
The speed humps, okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Satchin? Questions? Okay. Councilmember Kasakian, any questions, comments?
No, not at this time. And Mayor Brotman, I'm gonna hop off the, the rest of the meeting call.
Okay.
I apologize.
Okay. Hope you get better soon. Okay, so, um, okay. You have a question? Okay.
The toolkit hasn't been updated since ninety-six?
Two thousand eighteen.
Right, okay.
It was first established ninety-six.
I was in high school, maybe middle school at that time, but, okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it. Okay.
Okay. So, I mean, I'm glad we're doing this. I, I've always felt that we should be a little bit more forward-leaning in, in terms of how we interpret or how we, how we work with the sometimes overly restrictive MUTCD guidelines. And I'm glad that you've studied what LA has done and you've seen that there are ways that we can apply our own judgment to kind of freeing up the, the space a little bit to be able to do what we, what we need to do and what the community wants us to do. So that's very positive. I think it kind of, to me, is, is, is more evidence that, you know, this MUTCD is not, it's not as much of a straitjacket as we've kind of been led to believe. And, and I hope that we can apply this kind of approach to other things where we find MUTCD is not serving us well. So I would encourage you to keep doing what you've done in this case and, and expand that to perhaps other, other things that we're, we're trying to do, that we want to do, that, that we kind of always feel frustrated that we're not able to do. The only other thing I would say is, is, you know, I would like to see us, and maybe this is, you know, this is now a subsequent effort, but to expand that toolkit. You know, it seems like generally our go-to traffic calming approaches are, you know, speed, speed bumps, speed humps, and four-way stops. But we have, you know, these other things. And I see on your list, you have, you have curb extensions. And I know we've done curb extensions around schools in particular and some other places. I haven't seen too many islands. I think we've got maybe three or something. I don't know how many we have in Glendale. Very few. And then there, there are a number of, I don't mean islands. I meant circles, traffic circles, sorry. I meant traffic circles, you know. But there are islands. I mentioned, you know, this morning, or this afternoon, earlier this afternoon in our meeting, mentioned these other kinds of things that, that are out there, you know, speed tables. I saw, I just got back from Europe and I saw that one of the things that as you're driving and as you're entering a more, a slower, slower speed zone, there's a, a speed table, which is kind of like a raised, it's like a raised crosswalk, but it's not actually a crosswalk. It's to signal like, hey, you're coming into a new, a new situation, right? And it's like a speed hump, but it's, but it, it feels different. And maybe it has different applications. And, and so I would like to see us be more, you know, kind of lean into some of these different treatments and, and find out more about what LA is doing. Because LA is, is doing a lot more with these quick build approaches, you know, where they're just using paint and bollards to get curb extensions out there, to get islands out there, to get these chicanes, diverters, a bunch of other things. So again, I'm, I'm, I know I'm repeating what I said this afternoon, but, but I would really like us to lean in on this and, and make our streets safer in, in, you know, any way that makes sense. So. Okay. But, I mean, this is good. So unless there are any other comments, I'd be happy to take a motion.
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Okay. And roll call, please?
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We had two comments, didn't we? Eight A? What's that? Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We have Aric Sinanian, followed by Aaron Durham. And I apologize that we almost railroaded through on this without hearing from you.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to say I've been working with Pastor the past few months in my homeowners association because we, I live on East Windsor Road and that street is horrible with the speeding. It's a corridor, or I think the only corridor for the emergency vehicles in that area. So we only have one-sided parking, which means it's literally an open road with absolutely no stop signs anywhere between Glendale Avenue and Adams. So there's always speeding on that street. There's always multiple accidents when people are coming out. Our building is the most, I would say, one of the largest there. And the site, like, it's just really bad. There's been multiple accidents just coming out of our driveway. And I know we're exploring different options with the whole speeding signs or whatever it's called, but I think a stop sign is desperately needed in that region. And I know with the emergency corridor, we can't And I know with the emergency corridor, we can't do like the humps and all that stuff. So I just wanted to voice my support for that. Apparently, people have even died on our street because of the speeding issue. So, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. And is that something... Mr. Casanova, are we considering... Is this something that might apply to that, this new toolkit?
Yes, Mayor Brahman, as the gentleman mentioned, we're working closely with him and the homeowners association to address their traffic calming concerns. We've conducted a traffic study. The street is a emergency response route. It meets the speeding, the speed criteria and volume criteria in the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, so it could be a candidate for this all-way stop.
So we're working on it.
And we would have to study that further.
Good, good to know. Okay, Alan Durham?
Mayor Brahman, members of the council. I fully support, you know, adding always stops to the toolkit, but I have to say that every week I see at least several instances of people, not just not yielding, but actually blowing through four-way stops that are clearly marked. And I know it's intentional. I mean, it's not that they don't see it. So again, a lot of this, you can't necessarily expect you put up more four-way stops and it's gonna calm traffic or make pedestrians or bicyclists safer. I don't even feel that safe in a car approaching a four-way stop if I see somebody coming who I don't think is gonna stop. So it just points out the need that we need more traffic enforcement, which I know everybody's aware of, but that's always the complaint in my community. There's not enough enforcement of the laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so how do we do this? Do we start the roll call over? Okay.
I'd best to do that.
Councilmembers Asadarian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian? Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brahman?
Yes, thank you. Next item, please.
Next action item, action item B is Glendale Water and Power regarding Glendale Water and Power's proposed electric rate increase and schedule of community meetings. One, motion directing staff to complete the cost of service analysis process and return to City Council for the implementation of the full rate study by customer class, including presentation of said electric rates for City Council's consideration for adoption.
Mr. Galani?
Yes, Mayor Brahman, Mayor of City Council. GWP is proposing an increase in electric rates in three segments over 20 and a half years. However, the proposed cost of service analysis covers a five-year period. These rate adjustments that will you hear about will fund the Grayson repowering project, the Shoal Canyon biogas renewable generation project, the city-owned solar projects, as well as building and fleet electrification, and to cover the increasing costs of renewable energy, wholesale purchased power, and fuel. GWP seeking council's approval of the issuance of bonds in three phases, which triggers the development of a more thorough rate study that will be brought back to council for approval before implementation. With your approval, GWP is also asking to hold community meetings in the month of October to inform the residents of the need for these rate adjustments. Presentation this evening will be in two parts. Dave Davis, our utility finance manager, will kick it off and start it. And then Tony Georgis from our consultant, NewGen, will take the second part.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, member of City Council, Dave Davis, utility finance manager. Last fiscal year, City Council approved the Grayson repower and the Shoal Canyon biogas project. Total cost of these two projects is approximately $600 million. Construction has started on these projects, and GWP is committed to these contracts. The next fiscal year, you can see GWP has some steep financial commitments on these projects. The current fiscal year, it's estimated, you know, for us to pay $242 million on the expenditures on these projects. Next year, $256 million, and the remainder in '25, '26. And these also include some distribution projects, typical pole replacements, cable replacements, and other annual projects. To pay for these projects, we planned on issuing bonds, and we have five scenarios that we went through to try to find the most prudent scenario. Each scenario listed here would meet all the financial obligations for cash reserves and issuing the bonds. Each scenario would cover the financial needs of these lower projects and provide some additional funds to support a quicker adoption of projects that council has directed us. We chose scenario five, which includes three bond issuance of $166 million and a rate increase of 14.8% first year, average rate increase, 11.3% the second year, and 11.3% the final year. And I want to point you to this maximum debt service. In scenario five, that $42.4 million, our bond covenants require us to meet that at 110%. So that's, right now, estimated to be the maximum debt service. So the 110% of that will be approximately $46 million. So our rate increase has to supply enough revenue to cover the debt service of 110%, which would be $46 million.
Okay, can I just ask a quick question? If you could go back. Why is the debt service higher with the multi-tranches than the single tranche? Is that transaction fees?
No. The cumulative...
Because you don't get the money, huh?
Increase for the three years for scenario five is approximately 42%. And for scenario two, the $500 million, it's a little bit less than that. It's about 41%. And when we ran these scenarios, scenario five, we estimate the interest rate to be 4.25%. And I don't know off the top of my head what the interest rate was when we did this scenario for the one issuance of $500 million. So that might be the difference.
You mean, you're... For the three tranches, you're assuming a decline in the interest rates in year two and three?
No, it was...
Or the other way around, sorry.
No, 4.25% for all three years.
Okay, still not coming together for me. It's not a big difference. I'm just... It just seemed weird that the... Anyway.
Yeah, I'm guessing the scenario two, the $500 million, the rate was a little bit lower than the 4.25% because we did these at different time periods.
Okay, okay. And these are... What's the tenor on these, the term?
30 years.
They're all 30 years?
Yes. So in summary, the average rate increases will support the three issues of the bonds. And the lowest first-year bond issue, you know, we picked that for the lowest first-year rate increase, you know, to lower the impact for the ratepayers. And it will meet a 1.1x, the 110% debt coverage ratio, and provide a necessary cash reserves. Go ahead, Tony.
Thanks, David. My name is Tony Georgis with NewGen Strategies and Solutions. I'm going to walk through, as you've seen the recommendations, in regards to the bond issuances and the tranches. I'm gonna walk through how we got there, primarily the financial forecast, looking at forecasting the revenues and costs over time, and looking at some of those differences between last time we were here in 2021 and what's gone on now and the results that you're seeing. Finally, transitioning from the overall system recommendation, system average bill changes, to what the class impacts look like just from the cost of service process and the regulatory side of things. This is what we'll walk through, overall cost of service process. I'll just give you the five steps that we typically walk through. We'll get through four of those five today. The fifth and final step are the final rate recommendations by, by customer class and the charges within each class. The bulk of today, what you'll see is the financial forecast, which came to those recommendations on the 14.8 and 11.3 rate increases for the next three years. And then finally, you'll see a couple slides on the final couple steps, the cost of service and transitioning and translating the overall results to the classes. This is just a graphic to show you those five steps. As I mentioned, steps one through four, we'll step through today. We have those results. Those are a cost accounting and accounting process in the cost of service. The final step is designing the actual rates within each customer class, and that will be to be determined or will come as soon as we start marching forward with that. When we look at the financial forecast and the results you see today and the scenarios you just saw, that's part of the scenario analysis and the optimization that we completed during that process. We looked at a number of different debt issuance structures, whether it was a single or multi-issues, different values, 500, 600 million. And on the left here, we also looked at, there's other items we can... Other letters we can pull to try to optimize or mitigate the rate increases over time by using debt that we just talked about. There's obviously rate changes that will obviously contribute cash to the utility. We can prioritize capital, and then we also have cash reserves that we can either utilize or fund over time to balance cash flow and to, again, help mitigate some rate increases if possible. So that's what we performed in doing the financial forecasting over a period of 10 years. This process, we were looking at a five-year period. We're looking at a five-year window for setting the rates, starting with this current fiscal year, fiscal year '24. When we perform this optimization and we run these scenarios, we're really looking at two real key performance indicators on the financial side, and that's what we call debt service coverage ratio. David was alluding to that with that 1.1 number, and you'll see that repeated here in some slides. But debt service coverage ratio is simply your revenues less your operating expenses, what is left over, the net revenue. You divide that by the debt, the debt service, the annual debt service. That's where you need to get that 110%. So for example, if you have $40 million in debt service, which, or 41 and a half million, I think, was scenario five, you'll need 110% of that as net revenues to cover that debt service. So that's a metric that the rating agencies will monitor and how you rate the debt, and it impacts the cost of debt for Glendale. The second key indicator is day's cash on hand or cash reserves. Think of it as your savings account. So we want to monitor that and make sure that we're maintaining a certain level of cash reserves. We were targeting 300 days of cash reserves for GWP in this analysis. And that's needed just to manage cash flow in and out, different expenses, expenses coming in and revenues going out, and to contribute to capital and funding capital over time. Both those items, I do want to reiterate, both those items will directly impact the cost of debt and what the rate... how the rating agencies rate the debt from GWP. This is, I think, a pretty important slide. Obviously, a lot has changed over time, not only with Grayson, but what's happening with load and other things that are impacting the results that you're gonna see today. So I just wanted to highlight the key issues that are impacting the results and how they've changed over the last two and a half to three years. One of the largest is the load forecast. So over time, the load, that's overall energy that GWP is selling, the overall kilowatt-hours. GWP has been seeing a very stable to declining load overall. And as that load declines, it actually puts upward pressure on the rates. So the load forecast previously was substantially higher than it is now that was used in this most recent 2023 update of the COSA. Thus, that was putting some upward pressure on it. I'll show you a slide here on exactly that impact in just a moment. Obviously, the change in Grayson and how it has evolved overall in the generation technology. The financing structure, obviously, from 2018 to 2021 to 2023, things have changed with the debt financing of Grayson or the repowering of Grayson. And as you saw here, we looked at five different scenarios, the fifth one being three different tranches. One item that you'll see here, that's... It's an important item to distinguish when we talk about the system increases. It's really a bill increase, it's not necessarily a rate increase. Now, that... It's not really semantics either. So GWP has base rates, which are the rates that are in the tariff. So it's your customer charge, your energy charge, your demand charge. And then there are what we call pass-through or adjustment charges. That's the RAC, ECAC, and then the RDC. And those are adjusted over time as actual costs are above or below what were expected or the budgeted costs. And so as we look at the recommendations today, we are assuming the position or the rates that those pass-through charges are at right now are just embedded in what we call the base rates. So right now, the base rates to absorb the ECAC, RDC, and RAC, the base rates would go up 21.7%, but the bill would stay the same. It's just a change in the mechanism in which they're recovering the costs, or GWP is recovering their costs. So I just want to highlight that difference, that it's a... The rate change is a little bit different than the bill change. And so the bills that you will see or the bill results you'll see going forward are more of a bill standpoint than just a pure rate. This is just further to describe the difference between base rates and the cost adjustments. Again, I just want to reiterate, as a practice, GWP each time performs a COSA and reprojects or rebudgets the costs over a five-year period or whatever time period you're looking at for your COSA and your rates, those EC, those pass-throughs, those adjustment charges are all set to zero. And whatever those adjustment charges are set at currently are absorbed in the rate. So if there were no bill increases necessary to fund anything, you'd see no change in your bill, but the adjustment rates would go to zero and the base rates would go up, but your bill would stay the same. I realize that's a little bit confusing maybe, but just keep that in mind, that we'll absorb those and those will be zeroed out eventually when you see the rate recommendations. So just to highlight and put numbers to what has changed over time, this table here will show you on top, power supply costs are another large impact in addition to capital and load. Power supply costs have changed substantially since 2021. And this is not, you know, this is not unique to Glendale. It's common across California, as you likely know, and across the United States. There's a lot of upward pressure on electric utilities and rates and power supply costs. You can see here, the bottom of the third row here of this top table shows you the difference in the 2021 COSA projection of power supply costs versus the current projection of the power supply costs. You can see that in '22, '23, '24. You can see these costs increasing, you know, substantial double digits, 50, 45%, 20% higher than what was originally forecasted to two and a half years ago. That's just reflecting what's going on in the CISO marketplace and overall with gas prices and power prices and renewables and the cost of renewables. The second table shows you the impact of the declining load. So the first row here is the 2021 COSA forecast for load. These are total megawatt-hours. So you can see those numbers hovering just below a million megawatt-hours. You can see in the 2023 updated COSA, they remain essentially below a million throughout the time period through 2028. And you can see the percentage difference there on the bottom row in red. In 2023, it's almost 5% less than the 2021 forecast. Subsequently, it's about 4, 3, 2, and just coming back to zero out there at the beginning, at the end of the period. The reason that is important is any reduction, in broad terms, any reduction in overall sales essentially equates to a necessary rate increase or puts upward pressure on the rates. Many of the costs for an electric utility are fixed, so they don't really decline with less usage, less consumption. So you still have to recover those costs. So when the load, the amount of product that is being sold is going down, it's putting upward pressure on the bills and the rates. So this is... These are the results of the financial forecast, and this links up to the recommendations you saw on the previous slide from staff. This table here shows the top line of projected revenues for GWP for the electric utility, and it shows what we call the revenue requirement. The revenue requirement is the total cost that must be recovered by GWP to serve and provide electric service to its customers. So you can think of this as the total cost, whether it's operating cost, power supply cost, capital cost, bond, debt service, all of those costs are rolled up into the revenue requirement. So those costs we must recover in the rates. And that third line there shows the annual over-under collection. These are at the recommended rate or bill changes that are shown there at 14.8%, 11.3% and 11.3%. and 11.3. So you can see there each year, we're slightly over-recovering in the first three years and the subsequent 2027 and 2028, we're actually under-recovering. So we're, we're drawing down those cash reserves. We're using those cash reserves to balance it out. We're contributing cash from the utility. The DCOH that you see there is days cash on hand. That was that cash reserve level or savings account that I mentioned. You can see that we're maintaining right at about 300 days. It fluctuates from year to year and grows and then starts to decline in the latter years, but we're attempting to maintain that right at about 300, 300 days is the target days cash on hand we're trying to get to. And then finally, the most important metric, I think, in this discussion and really drives the bill increases that we're seeing here that must be maintained are the debt service coverage ratio. So there you can see that in red, that 1.1 number. Due to the bond ordinances and the mechanism by which you're issuing the debt, you must maintain a 1.1 ratio, so 110% of net revenue above the, above debt service. That forces you to increase the bill substantially in year one to meet that 1.1 threshold because you're issuing the debt right away. So you can see there, we've, that's where you see almost 15% bill increase in year one, and then it starts to tail off a little bit in the subsequent two years, but we still need substantial rate increases, 11.3% or bill increases, sorry, to hit the target of 2.0. So the 1.1 is a bare, bare minimum. If you fall below that, you would essentially be in default of your, your bond issuance. The target we're trying to get to is 2.0. And again, similar to the cash, cash reserve level, we're increasing in the first couple of years and then it starts to decline as we're funding from cash. The last two rows there are simply additional metrics or calculations that are done by GWP and the rating agencies looking at different cash, different revenues that they have, the revenue streams and net revenues available and obligations that they have in relation to depreciation and transfers. So this is just calculating instead of a debt service coverage ratio, it's looking at those net revenues, also then including depreciation expenses and the transfers to the city. And you see in the first, first year, or not meeting that test and that metric, but in 2025 and '26, those are met and remain in the black in the subsequent years. Again, these, the 14.8, 11.3, I would, I would view those as a bill increase. So if your bill is $100 right now with the adjustment charges, the bill will go up in general on a system average basis by 14.8% or $14.80 in layman's terms. So any, any questions here? I thought I'd pause here before I go into the cost of service results. These numbers are a system average. So in a cost of service process, we look at the overall utility and the total cost, total expenses, and we look at the bill changes necessary to meet those metric, financial metrics. From there, we then translate the overall bill impacts to what it would be on a class by class basis, being residential, small, commercial, and so on.
Question. So then when you're talking about with the scenario five and the percentage of increase 14.8, it may go up as high as 20% for some.
Depending on the class, yes. It, it varies by the class by class impact.
These are just averages.
Correct, a system average.
Question. So I, I must have missed it, but when did our load forecast go down? Because that's, that's something completely different than what we were hearing when we were talking about Grayson and all those other things.
Well, there's a balance, I think there's a balance there we've talked about previously, and I know Mark or others may want to chime in, but there's a balance between what's used in resource planning for kind of a worst-case scenario and the capacity that you need for like those worst days, the hot summer day when it's 110 degrees versus what the expected sales are. So it, while it might seem a little counterintuitive, from a resource planning side, you need to have the generation capacity and the actual power plants necessary to meet that worst day, so to speak, versus what's sold over 365 days a year as far as energy. So that's, that's a little bit different.
Okay. Well, I'll just let that sit.
Well, I'll follow up on that in a minute, but I'll, I'll hear some questions so far? No? Okay, well, then I will ask about the, I had the same reaction and it's, it is puzzling. I mean, I understand the difference between resource planning and peak, you know, peak loads and being able to meet worst-case scenarios, but we've been talking so much about electrification of, of, you know, vehicles in particular, right? How can, and you know, building electrification, I think, is going to be slower to, to impact us because that's going to be new construction, but vehicles, right? I mean, aren't we expecting to see a lot more load coming from charging electric vehicles? And why wouldn't that be showing up for so many years? That, that is really puzzling to me.
I understand. It's not, it's not a common, it's not an uncommon response to seeing these, but I, it's been, it's taken a lot longer for the EV penetration to reach levels that are actually leading to a substantial amount of consumption growth. That's what I've seen across California and across the country. Over time, this, this stability or even declining load has been very common across California and other states where the, you know, energy, energy conservation has been quite strong. It's not uncommon to see load very, very, very stable to declining, and I've seen that across a number of different municipal utilities and other utilities across California. The EVs, as they take root, it does take time, but it will lead to low growth that will take a substantial amount of time. And I think perhaps earlier forecast of the level of adoption or contributions to load may have been too optimistic on a state or national level, but that's to be unraveled, you know, at a different time. But this is, this is common.
Where are we getting these numbers? I mean, are these coming from the CEC or where, where, what's driving? I mean, is this, is this, I guess, is this us being conservative or is this the CEC telling us this is what the vehicle EV adoption rates are going to look like?
Mayor Brodmann, this, when we did the initial review, we were using CEC numbers on the Integrated Resource Plan prior to, what was it, five years ago, four years ago when we did the 2019 Integrated Resource Plan? We used the CEC's numbers. So when we see a decreasing load, we're also seeing that rooftop solar inside the city is actually taking away purchased power from us, so load would naturally go down. So we're very aggressive with rooftop solar. So that's causing the load to go down. And the penetration of, of, of electric vehicles is, is slower than expected. I mean, when we did the initial Integrated Resource Plan, we didn't anticipate the COVID virus, but I, we look at it like it's going to be a hockey stick. So, you know, the hockey stick then starts to shoot up. Once it starts to gain penetration, you'll see an increase of load dramatically with EV penetr, with, with battery, with electric cars, sorry. And then when we look at fleets, electrifying fleets, we'll see that also going up. So it's in the infant stage. It's been, it's been retarded a little bit because of COVID and supply chain. Right now, it's hard to get batteries. So it looks like the battery manufacturers are looking to do utility-scale batteries because they're being incentivized by the state and the federal government. So we, we see a lot more investment in, in utility-scale batteries than we see in making sure cars are electric.
Okay, I guess the question is, so these numbers that we're, we're making these forecasts, right? Are we, maybe this is a question for you because you work with other utilities, I imagine. So is this, is this a Glendale scenario or are you seeing everybody is, everybody is kind of following the same script here?
As far as kind of what's been happening or impacting the load?
The forecast, the load forecast and the, because you've got these two things, like you've got solar taking away revenue, I get that. And then you've got, you know, EV penetration increasing revenue and building electrification, I guess, later on, increasing revenue. So, so you've got these two. What, I, I guess I just want to, I want to know that these are not just numbers we're coming up with, but they are consistent with what is happening all around the state or what utilities all around the state are assuming when they're doing their COSAs?
It's consistent with others, yes. It's, everybody's, especially in California, it's a very similar condition.
Okay. I just have one other question on the debt service coverage ratio. I understand the 110 is kind of like a default level, right? Below 110, we've defaulted on our bonds, right?
Yes.
But the two, so why two? Is that something that the bond, the rating agents, does that help with our rating?
Correct. Depending on, you know, the rating agencies, they have different methodologies and ratings of the debt or the, of the credit worthiness of the entity, but yes, the higher the debt service coverage ratio that you have, the better rating you receive, reduces the borrowing costs of the entity. So a 2.0 in this situation, a 2.0 target is a very, very common one. You know, I even see 2.5 with other utilities. There are some other variables that will impact that, but a 2.0 is a very, very, very typical target for a municipal utility.
Okay, and that allows us to get the bond ratings that we, we expected?
It's one of the contributing factors, just like cash and some, and some others, but it's two of the bigger ones, correct?
Okay. All right, thanks.
So with the, with this represented on a system level basis, I want to transition to what then happens at the class basis or the residential, commercial, industrial level. So steps two, three, and four here are going to be condensed into really just one slide, and I'll show you the, the step four results on a by-class basis. I want to preface everything you're about to see by saying this is the cost of service. This is a cost accounting exercise. So these are the COSA results. They are not the rates that are being recommended. So the rates will be that final step after we get the approval of the, the system impacts. So these are two different ways that we slice and dice basically or organize what we call the revenue requirement. So this is functionalized and classified. So you see those two numbers at the bottom, they're the same, they're $306 million, almost $307 million. Now you can see the breakdown of that total revenue requirement on average for the five years to, to run the electric utility. You can see it's dominated by the production function. That's the power supply cost, that's power generation operators, power plant operators, fuel, natural gas fuel costs. All the power supply function is in, within that production amount of $236 million of the 307. You can see the remaining functions, transmission, distribution, and customer. Distribution being the more, most dominant one there, those are the distribution poles and wires you see that deliver the power to the homes and into the commercial businesses. The second table, what I'm-
Sorry, sorry, before you go, what is customer, what does that mean?
Customer function is like your customer service function, the key accounts folks, the, the billing system, the customer information system. That's within the quote-unquote customer function.
Okay.
The final table there is what we call classification of costs. The reason this is important, I wouldn't get too wrapped up in customer demand and energy, but this tells us how much of the costs of running the utility, how much of the $307 million is fixed versus variable. So variable is important because that does fluctuate with how much consumption there is, how many kilowatt-hours are used, how much energy someone uses or, or a commercial business uses. The fixed portion does not vary with how much someone uses. That, that 60% here in the pie graph remains if you're using zero kilowatt-hours or 10 million. It doesn't really matter, those fixed costs remain. That's important when we transition to some of the rate design that we'll do in step five. But you can see here, the customer and demand components, those are fixed portions of the overall $307 million. That equates to that 60%. The energy costs, which are things like purchases in the CISO market or natural gas consumption for running power plants, those numbers are variable and that's embedded in that energy number, that's the remaining 40%. So that's, that's the key takeaway, in my opinion, from here. Obviously, the production power supply costs are dominant in the overall costs of running the utility. Again, all these are very common for a California utility and more broadly across the country. Final slide we have here are the COSA results, cost of service results allocated to the classes. So on this graphic here, you'll see at the bottom on the X-axis, you'll see residential, small business, medium, and then large business. And then on the left, or on the Y-axis, you'll see it's cents per kilowatt-hour or dollars per kilowatt-hour. You'll see it starting at 5 cents and going all the way up to 40 cents per kilowatt-hour. All that number represents is an average rate. So you can, you can equate that to taking your bill and divided it by the total kilowatt-hours you consumed. So if you have a hundred, a hundred kilo, a $100 bill, you divide it by 1,000 kilowatt-hours, you're paying 10 cents a kilowatt-hour. That's, that's that rough equation there. That's just the average rate that we're showing there. So you can see here on the blue, the blue bar is the test year revenue requirement. So that's the total cost, that $307 million translated into each customer class. So that blue bar is what, what the COSA shows is what should be recovered from each class or the costs that are imposed by each class on GWP to provide electric service. So that's what the COSA says the average rate or the effective rate should be by class. The orange bar is the current bill or current revenues that we're recovering from those classes. The difference there is shown in the yellow and the yellow dots and the, and the gray line there. If we take the 14.8, 11.3, 11.3, if you consolidate those, they're going to be a little bit larger than that dotted line of 33%. The reason for that is this is a, this is a snapshot of implementing rates on day one, essentially, over a five-year forecast. Since we're phasing it in, the eventual cumulative rate impact is a little bit larger than the 33% because that's where phasing them in more gradually than hitting it all at once, which I obviously would recommend as well. So that's why the number is a little bit different from the 33% in summing those three years. The takeaway here is just simply translating that cumulative 33, 36, 37% bill, bill increase that was shown for scenario five in the financial forecast and what each class would be above or below that average amount. So if we did it all at once, it'd be a 33% rate increase. However, residential, from a cost of service standpoint, shows that it needs a 43% increase, not 33. Similar for small business, medium and large business are showing rating or bill increases that are below the system average at 20 and 28%. Again, these are cost of service results. These are not rate recommendations. These are what the costs are telling us and that we would use to inform rates eventually in that final step in rate design in step five. And again, these are not unexpected results. These are common results when we perform these studies, not unique to California. This is very common across the country. It's typically a balance between the commercial and the residential, small, commercial classes.
Questions? So does this mean, does this mean that we can expect, if, if we're talking about a 14.8% increase in our first year, it's going to be more for residential and it's going to be less for commercial?
Correct.
That's what we can expect?
Yeah, depending on how we phase it in, yes, that would be the, the overall direction that it would go. Residential, small, commercial would see, if it's a 14% rate increase, they may, they may need to see 18, 20% resident, or the large, commercial and industrial classes may see like a 10% rather than 14. And though, again, those are just, you know, for illustrative purposes, not what they would actually-
Are we done?
I am, I am done with all the numbers, yes.
Parking lots, so what's, what's?
Councilmember Devine, those were intended in case questions came up that required additional slides.
Okay, Councilmember Devine has a question.
Okay, all right. I guess this is for staff. When we started this repowering project, we were told that there would be no rate increases to the, to our residents, zero. We would be able to handle the finances of this. Now, I will probably be seeing a 20% rate increase. I was devastated by this report. I was shocked by this report, and I would imagine that everybody in this community is going to feel the same. How much would you say there were delay after delay after delay in the process of this repowering project? Did those delays have anything to do with this increase in the rates? Because I want the public to know what is the cause, I want them to know the whole story. What is the cause of this rate increase going from zero to, for me, probably 20% because I'm residential? Was it all the delays, the delay of the Grayson over and over and over again? The delay of Shoal? We made a decision, brought it back, took another year, all of those delays. How much of an impact did those delays make? And I understand that one year costs us $300 million. Is that true?
So the delays definitely cost us a lot of money and, for instance, Shoal Canyon, we expected Shoal Canyon to be up and running between 18, 2018 and 2019, and we're, we were losing, we're flaring that gas. The cost of the repower at Shoal Canyon was going to be paid in cash. Now we have to bond it, it's twice as expensive. And then when you add the loss of the energy that we had to purchase in order for us to be whole, that was tremendous. The delays were- The delays were huge up until '21, the cost of borrowing money was very, very inexpensive, so we still had some leeway there, but after that, the rates started to go up. And more importantly, when we were looking at the original repower, we were looking at a 262-megawatt repower with the best available thermal technology. We were looking at putting that energy, the excess energy, back into the market and to be able to utilize that resource in order for us to reduce the cost to the customer. Well, we went from a 262-megawatt repower down to a 58-megawatt repower with a 14% capacity factor. So we've been directed by council not to use the thermal generation, and we've also reduced thermal generation from 262 down to 58. So all those factors resulted in our inability to be able to utilize this resource in order for us to minimize the costs associated with the resource.
Thank you. That's all I needed to know, and I just want to make sure that the residents know that as well.
But just to be clear, nobody ever said there would not be any rate increases.
That's correct.
Right.
Well, we said we would be able to offset the rates, offset the costs based on being able to participate in the market. So in my opinion, if we were to participate in the market with the best available technology, the price of the wholesale market would have been an indicator as to when we would turn these units on, and we would therefore be able to take less efficient, more polluting units offline in the city or in the state of California, therefore creating a more environmental responsibility to the city, and now we're not being able to do that.
You're saying if it were not for the delays and if it were not for being able to resell power, we would have zero rate increases? From when?
From this repower.
No, but I'm talking about overall, because Councilmember Devine is saying zero to what we're seeing now, 20%, let's say. You're saying we would have been zero?
So in 2018, we actually predicted that the $350 million cost for the repower was going to result in zero rate impact.
That cost for the repower, but does that mean zero rate impact?
No.
Altogether for our utility? Of course not.
Well, there are other things that are happening, the electrification of the distribution system, the continuous capital improvement of distribution would have resulted in, or could have resulted in, some small rate increases, but the majority of the rate increases are the huge capital projects right now, and those would be Grayson, Shoal Canyon, and electrification of the distribution system.
Okay. So, why didn't you warn us about this?
Well, I think I did. I don't like to say I told you so, because we need to be moving forward, but I was, I remember standing up here in 2017, 2018, professing the fact that we needed to get it done quicker. If it was done, we would have been able to actually participate in helping the whole state over the last two years and then over the next two years when they've already indicated that there's a capacity shortage.
I mean, I don't think that was made clear, because the residents are going to go crazy when you do your final workup and residential rates are put in, they're going to go bananas, and they're going to blame everyone sitting on this council. And some were our fault. I mean, the delay, you know, I agreed with Mr. Brotman back two years ago for a six-month delay or something to study, that was the Grayson issue, if I'm not mistaken. Shoal Canyon, I think that's, those folks in Shoal Canyon, I think were the main driver of that issue. But this is terrible news. Even if you were warning us, I don't think you were warning us as urgently as you could. I mean, we could blame the city manager, but-
I think you were warning us.
At the time?
The city manager at the time.
At the time.
But just to add to comments that Mr. Young made also, in his defense, he didn't know the interest rates were going to skyrocket as they have done in the last year or so. So that contributes to the increased cost, obviously.
There are a lot, I think this is oversimplifying the situation. There are a lot of costs that have been going up, you know, and that we expected, we expected, right? Labor costs are going up, interest rates going up, and we had these projects that we had to do. So one thing we decided, we didn't want to be in the business of building a large gas plant to sell into the market. That was something that we, as a community, decided we didn't want to do. We didn't want to be in the business of generating fossil fuel power to sell into the market to make revenue to offset the cost of the repowering. That does cost something. We decided to do that. That was an active decision of this council, of this community. So let's not oversimplify things. But we have increasing labor rates, we have higher, you know, there are higher energy costs, we're purchasing gas that costs more, right? A lot of the things that we are facing are going up, just like they are in every realm of our lives, right? We're seeing rates go up and costs go up everywhere. So let's not oversimplify this, that somehow, you know, had we not delayed, we'd have zero rate increase. I mean, that's pretty silly, I think. Anyway.
I don't think it's, it's not silly, is it, Mr. Young?
I didn't try to make it simplified, I was answering a question. I didn't lead with that statement, because I didn't think it's fruitful for us to do that. I think we need to move forward and do what we can to minimize the effects on rates to the customer while providing reliable energy, clean, reliable energy to the residents.
Okay. Yeah, what's, so where do we go from here?
So Mayor Brotman, Mayor City Council, staff seeking direction to move forward and complete the cost of service analysis, the COSA, and will return to council for implementation of the full rate study and as well as community meetings that will take place in October.
Okay, we do, we have two callers. I do want to come back to a question, don't let me forget, I want to ask a question about feed-in tariff and time and mandatory or opt-out time of use rates, but let's do the callers first.
Yes, we have two callers. Our first caller is Fernando Roldan. Fernando, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Yes, hi, my name is Fernando Roldan, and I heard about the high rates, but Mr. Mayor, members of the council, may I remind you that a lot of people here in Glendale are either seniors or people with disabilities that use over, I'm sorry, not over, power wheelchairs or other devices that they need to charge, and they need lower rates, you know, so we cannot have high rate hikes, we need lower rates for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is David. David, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. The public, I guess a certain percentage of us like to be, like to be spoon-fed nonsense, spoon-fed just whatever politicians or bean counters want to feed us, but some of us don't. And I would encourage the public listening to, and the city council, to think out of the box, think past these utility companies, which are the same as oil companies, they have a silver barrel, we need energy. But we don't need to be spoon-fed and be led around by our notices. I'm hearing insane things, capacity of 256, we're down to 58 now is the plan, residential increases at 43%, I believe, 30 to 43%. That's insane. I mean, it was said quickly, but it was said. I heard it, and I hope other people heard it, down from one person saying there's a zero increase was promised to the people. Well, this is typical insanity of numbers. The accounting industry has a saying, there are lies, there are damn lies, and then there are statistics. I have been sitting here listening to this ridiculous presentation, and I'm not targeting a person. I'm just-
Helen, we can't hear you. We're having difficulty hearing you. Could you speak to your mic or to your phone? Hello, David?
I think it's the connection, it cut out.
He's still online, but we can't hear him. Hello, David? There's another call coming in, I don't know if that's him or someone else.
I'll see if he calls back.
The next caller is Lucia Hazrian. Lucia, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Hi, you know, I have a question. I understand that some of the rates were impacted because overall rates were increased. How would the cost impact if the rates start going down? Also, why the businesses are, the increase for the business rate is lower than residential? Because businesses use, you know, more energy for the business purpose.
There is a question there that I think would be helpful, you know, helpful to talk a little bit about these customer classes and why we see this difference between residential and some of the business categories. Could you touch on that?
Sure. Not all customers use the electric system or utilize the electric system in the same way. That's why you see the variation in the impacts of what the cost of service is. Again, this is an accounting exercise, it's not what the rate, the exact rate recommendations would be or the bill recommendations. The way residential and small business customers and connections use this electric system very dramatically from what large, commercial, and industrial customers use. So it's really a matter of the efficiency of the use of the infrastructure. So while businesses do use, yes, they do obviously use a lot more electricity than a single-family residence or an apartment home or multifamily dwelling, they use it in a more stable manner that has less of a variable impact on the system. That's why you see the balance of that kind of a teeter-totter. While there are substantial rate increases or bill increases recommended or shown by the COSA in the commercial classes, they are higher in residential, small, commercial due to that reason, just how the different classes are utilizing the system.
Okay. Did he call back?
Yes, David is back on air. Hi, David, you're on air, you have two remaining minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you so very much for your courtesy, I very much appreciate it. I was talking about the, some of the numbers that the gentlemen were throwing out, residential increases of 43% or 38%, as I believe I heard, which is just nuts. These numbers, has to be pointed out, these numbers, they don't know. They have no idea what these numbers will be, and that is the truth. It depends on the international market, depends on materials, depends on so many things. The rate, I even heard the rate will go up, but the bill will not go, will not increase. Just total, complete nonsense. Another thing is the component of clean energy that was talking about. You can't do anything with electricity except charge things. You can't manufacture anything, and that is a great component to our ability to keep rates from not going through the roof. The fact is 60%, I believe the figure is 60% of the electricity we generate now is generated by coal, and that is the problem with the EV charging, which is, was given to us as a savior to everything. Coal, we can't get off of coal fast enough, and just building more electric capacity is just increasing the coal, and those costs do not go down. I would just like the public to expand their mind and get off of this cycle of insanity and just taking whatever the-
Thank you, David, you're out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, bye-bye.
And just so we don't let these numbers hang out there without correcting them, we're not, nobody mentioned anything about a 30 or 40% increase in residential rates. Is that correct? We did not talk about that?
No, these are, no, not today. These aren't rate recommendations, these are just the cost of service, these are the costs, results.
Right, and, okay, and on coal, we're about 3%? What are we, we just went over this earlier. We're about 3%. So just for the caller to know, you know, 3%, we're at about 3% coal, not 60% or whatever that number was. It's a very small part, and a decreasing or soon-to-be-eliminated number in our portfolio.
3.4%.
3.4%, which will go to zero in, how many years?
Year and a half.
In a year and a half? Good.
Maybe that's-
Okay, just for the record, just want to make sure people don't hear this and run off saying, you know, oh, we use 60% coal. Okay, no other calls?
No other calls.
So I did have a question about how some of our discussions about feed-in tariffs and, but probably more importantly, time of use rates fits into this analysis, because we have been talking about, and I think most utilities are going towards, a, either a mandatory time of use, or I guess what typically is, what's really, it's an opt-out, where everybody gets put onto a time of use plan, they can opt-out. Generally, you don't get a lot of people opting out, right? So how does, how would that impact the financials? Is that included in these numbers that you're presenting to us?
We have not evaluated a mandatory or an opt-out time of use program for GWP and the impacts of that. Time of use rates would be in the rate-making, that's step five of the process. Time of use rates would impact utilizing, it would give customers, you know, an opportunity or an option of obviously shifting or moving their consumption and having an opportunity to save money on their bill. Where time of use rates really are beneficial, it does create an opportunity for a win-win for the customer if they can shift, and for the utility to reduce costs. It really comes on those peaking times, so think of it, you know, in the summer months when everyone's turning on their televisions coming home from work, or your air conditioning and everything else is coming on at once, that peaking time is addressed or is mitigated somewhat by time of use rates. So it sends a price signal for customers to use less at that period and use it at different times, that makes the grid more efficient, and it would reduce some of those high-energy cost periods or capacity needs at those times, so that's the real benefit to the utility.
So wouldn't that, I mean, if there was widespread adoption of time of use rates, wouldn't that impact the utility's financial projections? Since you say it is a win-win, it would reduce costs for the utility, it would, so if we were to do that, are you going to have to kind of redo this overall revenue requirement analysis, or what, how's it going to impact that?
Would, in the near term, it won't. The timeline and the on-ramp, I guess I would say, to implementing a time of use type of a rate is, I would say, minimum probably 18 months, if not more, giving customers a time, a period of time to get familiar with it and then utilize it, implement it. There's office systems, backend systems with the utility you have to implement, but that's, the 12 to 18 months is, I would say, a minimum, and what I have experienced with most utilities that are considering it and have implemented it. The benefits to the utility would be on a capacity basis, and it would take time to realize those. It would probably take at least two to three years down the road to realize those capacity impacts or benefits. But there would be benefits, we have not modeled those as a potential outcome. It would not, I can say, it would not mitigate, you know, the 14.8, 11.3, it wouldn't like cut them in half, but it could, it will benefit the utility.
Okay, and so as we come into this final phase of the rate design, is that when we're going to- talk about feed-in tariff and, and, and time of use rates?
Good evening, Scott Millen, Assistant General Manager. Feed-in tariff is not really going to be a benefit to us in general. I mean, it's basically a customer creating the opportunity to supply energy to us and we pay them a price that's above a, a normal rate that we would charge. So there's, there's an exchange there and that's just a slight offset. We've not seen a whole lot of penetration with that in, in far as being supplied to us right now. We are looking at different programs, which is more similar to purchase power agreements where there's an obligation to provide and there's long-term benefits for a customer who's deciding to, say, provide a megawatt of energy into our system. But, you know, there's, there's pluses and minuses to it. They take on risk and we get supplied energy and they pay for things where they don't meet the need. So feed-in tariff wouldn't, I don't think would ever have a real benefit in any of the rate cases.
Well, but, but I've been told over the last year that, because I brought up feed-in tariff program and I think I'm talking about the same thing, a purchase power, kind of like what LA does.
They're similar, but not the same. Purchase power agreements have more of an obligation associated. So sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Okay, no, no, it's fine, it's fine. My understanding of what LA's been doing for many years is that they've set aside a certain amount of money, I guess, to, for, for developers to come in, build solar, large, large-scale solar projects on commercial, you know, rooftops basically and, and then, you know, finance it and then sell that power back to LA on a, on a kind of a long-term contract.
Right.
And the price is like, they've been, I, I know at one point it was fourteen cents or fourteen and a half cents kilowatt hour. And, and I, you know, brought that up many times and said, you know, we're going to look at that, we're going to look at that, but we have to wait for the COSA. Now we've got the COSA, so are we going to do that?
We are already looking at how to implement that PPA structure. So we, we're ahead of this. We were already doing that. And we're, we're looking to come back to council probably in the next three months to talk about how we're planning on NIP and mining it and who's looking to be a, a test dummy for us so we can learn with them. So we already are looking at that type of program getting implemented, which is, it's different than a feed-in tariff. To us, it makes much more sense, provides more liability to the system and there's a, there's a better balance between supplier and user.
All right, well, I'm sure you'll educate us on that because I know, I know this has been a, you know, something LA's been doing for now five, six years. And, and, and we have, you know, we've had a feed-in tariff, but we've had zero takers because the rate is too low. Doesn't make sense for anybody.
To be clear, I, I don't know that it's too low. It's a little bit too ambiguous. For people who have to lay money down to predict how they're going to get the return on their investment, it's very hard for them to predict how quickly or if they'll get their money back. With the PPA, it's a little bit easier for them to predict what their ROI is. Something would seem more appealing.
Okay, but call, but, but time of use rates, that's coming. We're going to, that, that'll come with the final rate design? Just want to make sure we're.
If that's your direction.
I mean, that's what we've been talking about for a long time.
So if we were to do something like time of use rates, it's pretty customary for utilities to create at least a couple of options for the TOU, time periods, and make it opt-in to begin with, at least for a two-year period. Now, I, I understand what you're saying.
Opt-in doesn't work. People don't opt in.
Right, after that two-year period though, we would probably need to talk about whether or not we need to make it permanent or make it an opt, an opt-out situation or something along those lines. It's, depending on how aggressive we need to be, really tells us what the time of use period is going to be and what the benefits are going to be associated to it. And then doing this for like a two-year period and working with people to maybe voluntarily join into it at first. That's more about managing sticker shock and having to do that. It also gives us some insight and some learning period about, you know, what is best and how to charge for those particular periods.
I mean, this is stuff other utilities have been doing for a very, very long time.
Not us.
Not us, yeah, so, okay, all right, thanks. All right, so what do we do now? We, we take a motion for staff to move ahead?
Complete the, yeah, complete the cost of service analysis process.
I just, I haven't made any comments.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
I just didn't want my vote to surprise anybody, but I've been very open about the fact that I'm not going to support this. I voted against Grayson and I voted against Shoal because, not just because it was environmentally friendly, but I thought it was fiscally responsible for us to invest and I know that this big chunk of this is coming from that and so I will not be supporting moving forward.
Okay, all right, let's take a roll call. Oh, no, we need a motion. Did we?
I'll move eight B one.
Give me a second.
Second.
Okay, a roll call.
Councilmembers Asatiran. Divine. Kasakian. Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Brotman.
Yes. Okay, what's next?
Next is action item C Public Works regarding approval to release the request for proposal for operation and maintenance of fixed route and dialer ride transit services. One resolution to approve and authorize the release of the request for proposal for operation and maintenance of fixed route and dialer ride transit services.
Mayor Brotman, before staff goes on, Councilmember Kasakian wanted to be part of the discussion on this. So I'm making a request if it's possible for us to move it to another meeting for him to be able to join.
He didn't say anything, did he text you?
I, I communicated with him.
This is kind of unusual because he was on, he dropped off and said he didn't want to participate or he didn't. Couldn't, or, I don't know, he didn't say, he didn't say anything to me unless he's.
Well, typically these requests come in before the meeting, so.
This is very unusual.
It's up to you, Mayor.
I'm not comfortable with. Any, any thoughts?
I didn't want him to vote at all tonight, but. I mean, is it, if it's his request.
I just wish he had, he had told me.
I know this was, look, this item, when, when I was here last time, Councilmember Kasakian had opinions about it as well. I, I mean, he, he got sick.
Yeah, I know. I just, it's strange.
I, I, I mean, do you want, do you want, do you want to take a look at my text message or are you suggesting that?
Just tell me, just tell me what he's, what he, let's, let's just hear from him, hear from the horse's mouth here. What is he saying?
I said, okay, I'm going to ask them to be pulled and held until you get back, and she said, sure.
He asked it to be pulled.
I said, do you want to read my text messages? Is this what it's going down to? I mean, this is so insulting, I honestly. You're asking to read my text messages because I'm, I'm a colleague.
To clarify what he is actually asking, because it is unusual and he didn't ask.
This is an item he asked, he, he cared for. I asked him if he wanted to be part of discussion. He said, okay, so I'm asking, I'm putting in the request.
We will carry this over.
Yeah, I mean, I guess is there any time sensitivity with regard to this?
Mayor Brotman, Mayor City Council, I do believe we have a little bit of a cushion that if you choose to postpone it, it'll be two weeks, it won't be next week. And I think we have enough time to make it happen.
I wouldn't object because I would like to extend every courtesy to my colleagues in the process of deliberation.
Okay.
I would, if that's what he's asking for, I, I would not object to that, Mr. Brotman.
That's what he's asking for. Okay. Okay, what's next then?
Next are hearings, a committee development regarding amendments to the general plan land use map. Case number GP, I mean PGPA dash zero zero one seven four six dash two zero two three. Title thirty of the Glendale Municipal Code nineteen ninety-five zoning code text amendment and zoning map case number PZC dash zero 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 seven dash two zero two three relating generally to the Tropico Transit Oriented District zoning and objective design standards project. One, resolution amending the general plan land use map. Two ordinance for introduction amending title thirty of the Glendale Municipal Code nineteen ninety-five. And three ordinance for introduction amending the citywide zoning map.
Mr. Galanian.
Mayor Brotman, Mayor City Council, just going directly to Villia Zemetidus, I should know that better. Recently promoted to the position of Deputy Director of Long Range Planning. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The mic is yours.
Congratulations, and before you start, let me open the hearing at nine oh two P F. This is a hearing, right?
Yes, it is, correct.
So I will open the hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Brotman and council members. As mentioned by Mr. Galanian before you, is a series of amendments to the general plan land use map. The zoning code with regards to a new zoning district and also an amendment to the zoning map. These originally, and just briefly, just to show you the location of the area in question. This would be for Tropico, which is at the southern section of the city adjacent to the Los Angeles border. It is within a half a mile of the Glendale Transit Center. The background consists of a grant by Metro for Tropico Center Plan, which is a high-level, high neighborhood, neighborhood level planning document with recommendations for pedestrian orientation, transit, last, first and last mile routes and whatnot. And before you is the zoning to actually implement the Tropico Center Plan, which was actually adopted by city council back in two thousand and eighteen as part of the South Glendale Community Plan. The actual general plan land use map, and you'll see it noted before you today here. The area consists of community services, commercial and mixed use. Based on the South Glendale Community Plan, the intention was to have the land use designation for this area be an urban center. However, staff is at this point in time proposing that the general plan land use map be updated only for a portion of Tropico. And this would be the portion that is currently designated as community services. That area would now then be re-designated to mixed use. The entire Tropico area would then be mixed use, which consists of commercial, industrial and residential land uses. And this would be consistent with the mixed use designation located along the city's major arterials and with densities up to a hundred dwelling units to the acre. And there is a reference to urban center in the existing land use designation for mixed use. So this would be consistent with the intention of the South Glendale Community Plan, the Tropico Center Plan, as well as the general plan. Proposed zoning text amendments. As noted, we are proposing a brand-new transit-oriented development set of objective design standards within a new zoning chapter entitled Transit Oriented Development. It has the same key sections as the other zoning designation or zoning chapters, whether it be residential, commercial, mixed use. It incorporates objective design standards, which is a very unique set of criteria that has not been to date part of our zoning code. This would be similar to the DSP and there's definitely an emphasis of illustrations over text. The slide before you shows the existing zoning designations on the left, which is a combination of C three, commercial services, IMU industrial mixed use, IMUR industrial mixed use residential, SFMU, the transit district, and then a small sliver of commercial auto. This entire section, as part of the rezoning effort, would go to transit-oriented development. Two districts, this would definitely simplify the zoning in this area. And in this case, move from various commercial, industrial, mixed use, industrial zone designations to two zones. Transit-oriented development district one, transit-oriented development district two. Transit-oriented development district one, I'm going to go quickly through these slides, would be the majority of the, of the Tropico area. Transit-oriented district two would be essentially the hospital zoning locations. The, the area of Glendale Memorial itself and the adjacent medically oriented lots. densities in the, in the TOD one would go up to one hundred units to the acre, a height of sixty feet. And again, these would be previously zoned areas of C three and commercial auto oriented. The increase in density, and then again, the underlying, the previous, or I should say, still currently, the, the C three density limits is forty-three units to the acre. And so this was based on council's direction, is when we brought it back to city council in September of last year. Council agreed, based on staff's recommendation, because of the location of this area, to definitely raise the density limits to a hundred dwelling units to the acre to ensure the maximum potential density would be available so close to the transit center. Now TOD two, based on direction from city council back in two thousand and eighteen, specified densities up to a hundred units to the acre and a height up to two hundred feet. And again, this was based on the, the density and height per council's direction in two thousand and eighteen. Yes.
Was that two hundred feet to accommodate the hospital building up?
Correct, yes. The Tropico TOD zoning incorporates same types of use tables and development standard tables that you would see in the other various chapters. An apologies, I believe you can't read this, but you actually had a hundred and ten pages worth of the, the zoning ordinance changes in your packet. So that most likely is much more readable, but these are, just be an example of the, the standard use table on the left and the development standard table on the right. Here's where there's the exciting changes here to our zoning code would be the objective design standards. We've broken them up into three sections. Those sections would correlate to what we see in the DSP as also with our design guidelines for the other, the design guidelines for citywide standards. First one being site planning, again, to definite intention to promote pedestrian-oriented public realms, usable open spaces and screening of parkings. These would be the, the site planning sections. Massing and scale standards, this would be to reduce the massing and encourage human scale design for these high-density residential and mixed-use commercial projects. And last but not least, architectural, architectural elements. Again, this is just to encourage a high-quality design through materials and articulation. At this point in time, I can go briefly through the various sections. Many of these sections are the same as what you saw in the September presentation. We have addressed comments from both city council and from the design review board and planning commission. So I can either go into greater depth or I can just go quickly through these slides. This one being Tropico TOD zoning for site planning, starting with pedestrian realm. Would you like a brief overview?
I would opt for the quicker approach.
The quicker approach, okay. This one in terms of site planning, site planning is broken down into four sections, the pedestrian realm. We want to ensure a very pedestrian, walkable community. So for Tropico, you would have a, a public realm dimension of either twelve feet on the narrower streets or fifteen feet on the, the significant streets. Both of those type of public realms would have a landscape parkway with street trees, a wider sidewalk to accommodate two pedestrians walking in tandem and then a building adjacent zone. For building setbacks, it would depend on at-grade uses. There would be more of a setback, you know, for residential. If it's at grade, just to ensure privacy. Otherwise, there would be no setback for commercial uses or residential uses that are at a stoop level. Here you, before you, you'll just see two, two images that are part of the, the illustrative diagrams that are in the new code itself. that are in the new code itself. Change from site planning, current site planning for the area is the publicly accessible open space. Right now, in this particular area, there is no publicly accessible open space requirement, so this is a wonderful upgrade. You would have to have 10% minimum if your lot is greater than 60 feet in width, and for sites that are greater than two acres, there would be a 15% minimum, so ensure usable publicly accessible open space. And parking design and access. Right now, the zoning code requires that all parking be subterranean or semi-subterranean for residential. In this case, we would make sure that the parking percentage would be allowed at grade, and it would be screened by active uses. Second section would be massing and scale, to ensure that the bulky buildings are broken down and articulated, there would be an upper-floor stepback requirement. There would also be no requirement if the, if the building is adjacent to the public, or for the locations where the building adjacent to the publicly accessible open space. To ensure facade modulation across the building plane, there would be a vertical modulation requirement. Again, this is breaking up the tripart, there's a base, middle, and top for buildings four stories or more. For horizontal modulation across the building facade, street-facing modulation requirements of 30% of the building to have some sort of modulation. Again, there would also be a building separation if a building is greater than 225 feet in length, so there would be an additional separate building separation for those. There's also a wrapping requirement, the interior horizontal modulation, and then buildings at corner street intersection would require some sort of corner element treatment. Last but not least, architectural elements. It goes down a list of architectural elements, we have standards for each of these. Two new subsections would be the storefront transparency standards to ensure that commercial uses on the ground floor provide active, engaging, street front facades, and also additional requirements for location of building entries and lobbies. The TOD chapter also features open space. Again, we're going back to the publicly accessible open space, which is currently not required, which would be an upgrade. There would also be similar standards for these publicly accessible open space courtyards and paseos, such as those you see in the DSP. Residential open space requirements would remain, these are currently an existing set of standards for residential uses, so you would have 140 square feet per unit, and they can provide this in whether it's common, private, or on top of the publicly accessible open space. And again, similar design standards to what's in the DSP. Miscellaneous zoning code amendments, we just want to make sure that the references throughout the zoning code are consistent for the new TOD zoning, so site planning, landscaping, parking, loading signs. The amendments include certain changes and upgrades to our parking section, these would be to allow for at-grade parking for residential uses, as long as it's properly screened with active uses. To allow tandem parking in certain situations, similar to the DSP, we would modify residential and certain commercial ratios, parking ratios, to match those in the DSP. And then we are also including requiring larger projects to comply with the same trip reduction and travel demand measures in the DSP as well. You have in your packets the record of decision from the Planning Commission and from the Design Review Board. Design Review Board is very favorable of the objective design standards, and we have incorporated their comments in terms of having outdoor dining in the publicly accessible open space and whatnot. Planning Commission also recommended approval to City Councils required by code, this was back in August 16th. They're very complimentary of the objective design standards, they're supportive of the land use and general plan map amendments. There was also discussion of minimum unit sizes and densities as detailed in the staff report. For council to discuss, if you wish, there is an option of either maintaining the existing minimum for unit sizes right now, or possibly reducing the minimum unit sizes to either 100 square feet less, or 20% reduction, or there was a discussion perhaps eliminating the minimums altogether in the TOD by Planning Commission. Staff supports the reduction in the minimum unit sizes as per option 2, but we do recommend that the currently proposed 100 units to the acre density standard be maintained. All of these, all of these changes, the, all of the changes in terms of the zoning standards, the general plan land use map amendment, the zoning map amendment, and all of the objective design standards were reviewed. Staff prepared an addendum to the previously certified final EIR for the South Glendale Community Plan. Again, South Glendale, the EIR was certified by City Council in 2018, it included the Tropico Center Plan, determined that no new significant impacts based on the new zoning would occur, no new environmental analysis is required. An addendum was included as part of your staff report, so we ask that council recognize and acknowledge this addendum prior to making any decisions tonight. And last but not least, staff's recommendation. We ask that council adopt the resolution amending the general plan land use map this evening, which does require a four-fifths vote, and introduce the ordinance amending the zoning code and the ordinance amending the citywide zoning map. Hopefully that was brief enough for you, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, let's run through questions first.
Yeah, just briefly, good work, I appreciate your years of work on this. The only question I have are the minimum size, I can't imagine a three-bedroom at 800 square feet, or a two-bedroom at 640 square feet. That seems really oppressive. So I would not be supporting reducing the minimum size, and I'm not sure where that non-support would land us in this, because we need all votes on the dais to move forward. I'm not sure where my colleagues are, I mean, maybe we're all supporting that, but I'm not sure where a disagreement would, would put this whole item. But, I mean, that, everything looks great, but that really stuck out to me as perhaps being problematic, so.
If I could, Mayor, council members, I know that that was a recommendation made by the PC, but the City Council previously has directed staff to look into potentially reducing the unit sizes, we would not take that up as part of this work here. That's more of an aside, if you will, in terms of recommendation. We will be studying that separately, but those numbers...
That was Councilmember Agajanian, who was very, you know, he was struck by those luxurious units in one of the last projects, but...
That is correct, and we don't know what those numbers will look like, and partially we haven't gotten to that because we have been working on projects such as this, but that is part of our work plan, we will be revisiting that at some point and coming back to council. But I would say that that is a separate discussion from Tropico.
I'm a little confused then, because I thought that was part of what we were deciding on tonight. Because I, where I come from, I don't see why we would want any minimum unit sizes, I would leave it to the market to decide what's appropriate. Obviously, if it's too small and oppressive, nobody's going to want it, they're not going to build it. For us to arbitrarily, I think, go around saying, well, you know, you need a certain size, because we think you need a certain size, is philosophically something I think doesn't, doesn't make sense. And I don't know about three-bedroom so much, but I know, you know, I built a junior ADU, I have a guy living in there, it's 330 square feet, he's perfectly happy, it gives, it gives a unit for somebody who wants to live in that kind of place, and it's, you know, inexpensive. So my vote would be to just eliminate minimum unit sizes, so we're on opposite sides here, but I don't know, how does that play into what we're deciding tonight?
And what I would say, that there would be some very significant consequences to that, if we're, to make that change. Philosophically, yes, there's a lot of debates to be made on whether or not unit size minimum should exist, but what would happen if we did that? Because we use an FAR calculation for our density in our South Glendale Community Plan and other locations, that functionally raises the density, which then goes beyond what's been approved of the South Glendale Community Plan. If you're familiar, that has been through a series of litigation. If we do that, that is going to potentially cause us some challenges, and our recommendation would be to allow us to take that up as a separate discussion, so that if that does require environmental review, we can do that at that time, independent of this plan.
Okay, because I know a year ago, when we discussed this, there was a motion, and a second, council member Satrian seconded my motion to look at, look at, I guess, also the DSP, look at eliminating minimum unit sizes in the DSP.
Correct, and that's that body of work that we will be coming back with, and we can look at this as well for Tropico as part of that body of work.
Okay, so we can separate them, but that will come relatively soon?
I'd have to take a look at the timelines in our work plan. As you know, we have a number of long-range planning initiatives, we, as City Manager here announced, we just recently appointed a Deputy Director for Long Range, and we're staffing up now. As we develop that work plan, we can give you a more estimated timeline, probably in the next coming month or so. But even, again, with that being said, if we're going to do things like change the unit sizes, that functionally changes the density, and then at that point, we will need to consider potentially an environmental review. So this is not something that we can just kind of flip a switch and say, we're now not going to have these minimum unit sizes. It will be more exhaustive than that.
If you don't have a, if you have a minimum, you have no minimum unit size, you still have your density, you still have your however many dwelling units per acre, so, so what? I mean, that's still a limiting factor, but, you know, somebody might want to build smaller units and have a smaller, you know, get their 100 units in a smaller, you know, envelope, right?
Correct, but they could also potentially put it in a larger envelope, which would equate to more units, which is where we would need, we would need to analyze this further, because this does...
They can create more units.
Potentially it could, when we're using FAR calculations in certain locations, it can. And again, I think this is something that we can bring back and show through diagrams and other illustrations on how that works, and why that concern is there, and why we do not want to put this plan in jeopardy by having that conversation as part of, part of this project.
Okay, I just, I wanted to get to this, I mean, this was like, this conversation started, I think, like in 2020.
It has. As you know, we had the housing element, we've had this, we've had the South Glendale Community Plan also in litigation, so we could not touch that during that time while it was in litigation. So we've kind of been held in a holding pattern until we got through that, and now we can start to consider that.
Okay, let's continue. Okay, well, I felt that was kind of counterintuitive, you know, lowering the unit size, then with 100 units per acre, but I think that's a conversation for another time. I have a couple of questions, concerns. First of all, the tree placements, and I brought in a picture, but the tree placement is 25 feet apart, and I'd like to see it at 15 to 20. Of course, it's going to be determined by the arborist, but I brought a picture in from Burbank, you can put that one on the screen? City clerk, hello?
I'm just...
Uh huh.
Do you have a public comment?
Okay.
Could you repeat what you said?
Picture?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Now, if you can count, now, you can see that these trees are closer together than 25 feet. Now, can you tell me what's wrong with that picture? What have our arborists, what did our arborists say about this particular configuration in Burbank? And by the way, the apartment units are terrible looking, I don't like those at all. But anyway, the trees, but it looks so nice, and they're closer together than 25 feet.
Yes, Councilmember Devine, council members, this particular image, I actually shared, or we took a look at various images with regards to tree spacing. The city arborist and the Deputy Director of Public Works were adamant that the tree spacing in this photograph are, is much too close, because essentially, to summarize, when you, this particular image would be great for what you are seeing currently today in a few years, the, the root systems, the canopies, the trees themselves are going to be stifled, and you will not get the maturity that you need for these canopy trees. They said that the 25-foot maximum spacing at this point in time, or I should say minimum spacing, would be the ultimate minimum spacing. They recommended, and the city of LA actually has a 30-foot recommendation for street tree spacing, in that that is to ensure the maturity of trees both at the root level and at the canopy level. So based on their direction, this is not something that they would recommend at all in terms of the arborist, correct?
The spacing?
The spacing, correct.
Well, then, I know that they're going to be selecting, the arborists are going to be selecting trees that work in the areas that will be landscaped. So if we're going to keep the 25-feet spacing, feet, is it feet or foot, feet spacing, that they choose, they select trees that have large canopies. Now, you look at these trees, even on this picture, compared to some of the trees that are planted along brand, that are like sticks, and these actually have leaves and, you know, they, they look like they eventually will provide shade, whereas some of the trees that we have planted on our streets do not. So I just would like to make sure that in the future with this, this plan, that you make sure that the trees that are planted provide shade, because this is the aim of all of this, planning is a walkable neighborhood.
Yes.
And the only way it's going to be walkable is if it, shade is provided. Okay, so my second question is about the horizontal modulation, where you have, where you have a minimum of 24 inches between...
Would you like me to bring up the slide?
That's on, let's see, I don't have the page on that one.
It would be a modulation of a minimum of 24 inches, but that would just be the minimum offset, they can offset the much...
Can they do it three or four feet?
Yes.
Because 24 inches is hardly, and especially on massive, massive buildings. Do you agree, Mr. Calvert?
Yes.
Just so you know, yes, yes.
Not to put you on the spot or anything. Okay, so it's, that's the minimums that they could do, and you could suggest that they do more just to make the building a little more interesting and not looking like that one that we just saw.
Everything that you see there is a minimum, council member. Obviously, we always do encourage for more, but we try to set at least a baseline that is acceptable, but we do always try to get more from them.
Okay, and the other question I had was about the sidewalks, and I'd mentioned that you have a minimum of six feet in the sidewalks, and I was thinking that maybe you could take a foot off of either side of the curb side, et cetera, and make the sidewalks eight feet wide, so the more, you know, you said six feet is just for two people to walk together, and I'm thinking, two people and then somebody coming towards me, where do I go? And another foot or two on the sidewalks, but your answer to that was?
Well, would you like, to take a foot off of the parkway adjacent, or the parkway zone, unfortunately would be defeating the fact of your street trees, because the street trees themselves need the spacing in order to mature. So I would not suggest taking the dimension from the parkway adjacent zone from the other direction, it would be somewhat difficult depending on the others, the building adjacent zones. If you want to provide additional landscaping, buffering in front of the buildings, if you want to provide outdoor dining adjacent to the commercial designations, again, it depends on the criteria of what your intention is, but six feet has been found to be ample room for two individuals walking through, and that actually would be an improvement over the situation that we have currently today in that area.
Councilmember, I'd add to that, the streets where you see typically the six-foot wide sidewalk are some of the existing kind of lower, calmer, lower-density, calmer streets, residential, if you will. They also have kind of the wide existing parkways that kind of really define those streets, kind of going to Ms. Zemetitis' point that we would be eating into that parkway at that point. So if we're going to do a sidewalk that's a little more narrow, this is really kind of the place to do it, because those are considered to be kind of low-intensity residential streets.
Well, I thank you for answering all my questions that I, you know, my concerns. You did a yeoman's job on this report, it's excellent, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Satrian?
I love all of it, I'm good.
Okay, that's simple.
Great work, great presentation.
Mayor Botman, we have a caller and a card.
Okay, well, I'll give some, I have some questions first, and then we'll go to the callers. Um...
callers. Okay, so parking minimums, I think, well, we talked about this, so parking minimums, does the entirety of the TOD fall under the Laura Friedman's bill, I forget what it is, AB, whatever, whatever the bill number is?
Thank you.
That eliminates parking minimums within half a mile of, I guess, certain high-quality transit?
Yes, Mayor Botman, the entire area is located within a half a mile of a major transit stop.
Okay, so the entire area, then, there is no, there is no parking minimum?
Correct, the city would not require.
Okay, I just wanted to. Drive-throughs, I know we have this issue coming up, but are drive-throughs, with what we're, what you've presented now, are drive-throughs still a permitted use?
Drive-throughs would not be permitted in the Tropico area.
In the Tropico area? Now, regardless of what we decide about drive-throughs through our study?
At this point, yes.
But the Tropico area will not have any new drive-throughs?
Correct.
And that includes, that's not just fast food, there's banks, pharmacies, everything?
Yes.
So just like the DSP? Okay. And then, I had a question about gas stations. Would gas stations, if somebody wanted to put in a new gas station, would that be a permitted use?
Per this code, yes.
Okay, do we want to amend that? I mean, it seems very counter, counter to our, our goals for additional gas stations. There may, you know, there may not be any demand for them, I don't know, but would that be, what would, what would you suggest?
At this point in time, there is one gas station in the Tropico area. That one gas station serves all of South Glendale, essentially. If that gas station was to be demolished more than 50%, then they would lose their legal non-conforming rights, they would not be able to be rebuilt, and that gas station would never be able to come back. It's up to the council whether or not you choose to allow reconstruction of that gas station or not, so.
But that would be, okay.
We can, we can amend it and say, such as what we did for vehicle auto repair, that gas stations, in this case, or vehicle auto repair, are legal as of the date of the ordinance.
As of the date of the ordinance, but no new ones?
Correct.
No, I'm not comfortable with, I understand it, I'm not, yeah, I'm not comfortable with.
Do you want more gas stations in the TOD?
If I could, Mayor, Councilmembers, if I'm quoting my Deputy Director of Current Planning correctly, he had stated the last time a gas station's been built in the city is 20 years. Nobody's really expressed interest. We're not seeing anybody wanting to build it. I think what Ms. Semitidis is outlining there is that if we would like to hang on to the one that's there, and let's say they want to make some sort of change, again, if we go anything over 50% demo, that becomes a new project, it can't come back. Obviously, that's a council decision, but we left that, that kind of door open. We don't see any threats of new gas stations being built, though, within the city.
I would expect that, actually, we should at least have one in that area.
Well, we have one. I'm talking about additional gas stations.
But if it burns down, they're not going to be, or damaged, they're not going to be.
There's always a variance process, right? There's always a way to do it. I mean, we can always.
But in regards to really kind of simple economics, highest and best use, at this point, given the increase in density that has now occurred in that site, it would not be conducive nor financially rewarding to build a gas station there.
Okay. Okay. How do we ensure good quality ground floor commercial in this area? I know that's going to be really important to what we want to do, and we, you know, I'm thinking about some of the recent projects, like the Sears, and the pushback from the developer there, saying, you know, ground floor commercial doesn't work, but then across the street, we see BBs is very successful, and so how do, what are your thoughts on that? And how, does this, does this help ensure that we are going to get good quality ground floor commercial?
I think I'd probably go back to our downtown-specific plan work that we've done before, and it's not even so much a focus on commercial, it's more of a focus on an active use. You know, the reference to BBs versus what's across the street, it took many, many years for those spaces to fill in. We saw those in Onyx, those in Legendary sit vacant for a very long time, whether that was critical mass, whether that's, you know, in frank terms, facing a traffic sewer with high-speeding cars, it makes it not interesting to be on that. It took a long time for those to fill. I, in my opinion and perspective, as long as we have active uses, which can be a diverse array of uses, doesn't have to be retail necessarily, this environment will be conducive to that. And we have regulations and policies to ensure that even if it's not a retail store or necessarily a restaurant, that we can still ensure an active storefront.
Are live-work spaces active storefronts?
Yes, they are permitted.
Yeah.
On the ground floor.
So we may end up just getting live-work space, not anything that people are going to engage with?
Potentially, but we're also not seeing a giant demand for live-work. I know we've seen it pop up in a few projects, but that's been allowed in just about every other residential project in downtown, and we've only seen that show up in a couple of them.
I mean, I would like to see us getting more ground floor uses that are, that the public interacts with, and it seems to be a real struggle. And I don't think you're going to get a successful TOD unless you have that kind of activity at the ground floor level.
And I would say when it comes to, if there's a build-out and we get those spaces, those vanilla box, black box spaces for commercial use, our economic development team can also work to identify opportunities, whether it's finding tenants, or do we find more creative uses in terms of art, whatever that may be, art galleries, it could be a lot of different things. And I think at that point, it's going to be up to our economic development team to really kind of amp up, because, you know, it is a struggling retail market. I mean, we're doing very well in this city, but we're not seeing new spaces getting filled up in, you know, those kind of storefronts, so I think we will need to be more creative to ensure that those are filled in an active manner, but that's something we would lean on our economic development team to assist with.
Okay. All right. So, and then, I think the last thing I have is with hospitals. I brought this up last year, you know, hospitals are very unfriendly, and medical facilities generally are the way they're designed. It's very unfriendly to anybody that's not in a car. And how do we, how do we make sure that the hospitals do the kinds of, make, you know, kind of design around, you know, the potential that people are going to come on foot, maybe off of transit, or on a bike? And I, and I know Ms. Semitidis and I were talking earlier today, and I know that there's something, one of the items in the travel, in the travel demand measures, we have bike facilities, and hospitals and medical and dental are excluded from that. Can we include them rather than exclude them?
Mayor Botman, Councilmembers, the issue raised in the bicycle facilities, bicycle facilities will be required in the, in the Tropico TOD zone in regards to the travel demand measures for this particular instance as well. There are additional short-term and long-term bicycle rentals, bicycle rentals, short-term and long-term bicycle facility requirements. Yes, currently, medical offices are not, are not included in that. It would be up to council to decide whether that would be a policy, policy change, since that travel demand measures apply citywide. So that is something that we can, that we can consider.
So we could do that, not exclude them from these travel demand requirements?
That is correct. We could come back and, as part of the mitigation strategies, if you recall, I think that was maybe two, three years ago, when we, SB 793, 783, where we converted to VMT, and we created those mitigation strategies. That was approved by council. If we would like to go back and revisit those at some point, if council were to request an update, we could do that.
It wouldn't be part of this, because, because it would be a simple thing to just take off the excluding hospitals, medical and dental offices, right?
Because it's citywide.
They're actively excluded from this.
Because it's citywide, we would take it separate from the Tropico project. So if the request came, we could come back with that and.
Okay, well, I'll make you the request.
I would turn to our city attorney to see if the request is being made in the appropriate new manner.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, so the question is whether or not the modification to the transportation or travel demand, which are citywide policies, can be separately implemented here within the adoption of the TOD?
No, I believe the mayor's requesting to come back with a separate item to discuss the citywide mitigation strategies.
That would be subject to the process that we've set forth for bringing matters back before the city council for consideration.
We have to list it as new business item for discussion at the next council meeting, and then we'll take a vote for a full staff report to come back.
All right, then, that's basically it.
Want me to move the item, or?
Yeah. Oh, no, no, please, we have cards and we have callers. So we'll start with Alan Durham.
Mayor Botman, members of the council, I'm Alan Durham. Thank you for letting me speak. I watched the most recent planning commission meeting on this zoning change, and I support the zoning change for the Tropico Transit-Oriented District, but I'm not in favor. There was a lot of discussion at that meeting in terms of reducing unit sizes or eliminating minimum unit sizes, not only in that district but, or zone, but in Glendale in general. And I'm definitely not in favor of reducing minimum unit sizes, and definitely not in favor of eliminating minimum unit sizes in any area of Glendale. Yes, we need a lot more housing, but we need livable housing. And I believe, under the Density Bonus Program, well, I know this as a fact, because it was part of 246 North Jackson, developers can get reductions in minimum unit sizes already through various waivers and incentives that happened on Jackson Street. And I believe the Density Bonus Program also would allow up to 150 dwelling units per acre in this zone, rather than just 100 units per acre. So that's something else that wasn't stated here. And if minimums, unit sizes are eliminated, in California, it would be legal to build micro-units as small as 190 square feet. And that's just not going to be appropriate for the city of Glendale. I'm not saying it would happen necessarily, but I think you get down to a certain minimum square footage, and it's just not very livable. There have been studies where living, whether it's a dormitory or homeless housing, where living in too small an area is not conducive to good mental health. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we have callers.
We have one caller, Fernando Roldan. Fernando, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you so much for letting me speak. I have to agree with a lot of what people said. Please, no minimum housing. I know we need a lot of housing, but not minimum. Married, again, and I do, I'm sorry if I'm a broken record, but may I remind the mayor, the council, and of course, the consultants? I am a person with a wheelchair, so some of us need bigger rooms. I'll say it again, some of us need bigger rooms. And please, you know, before making any projects like these, please consult with some of us who are disabled. I mean, I really am asking, putting my foot in the door, and I'm willing to help my city to make sure that everything is ADA compliant. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all.
That's it? Okay, so you can make your motion.
I move the item. A second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers, Asadirian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes.
We have two, two ordinances for introduction.
Oh.
There's a resolution.
There's a resolution in two.
Correct.
Oh, and I, this was a hearing, I didn't actually.
And you need to close.
Close the hearing, so I closed the hearing at 9:45 PM.
I'll introduce the ordinances.
That would be at 9:00 to, 9:00, excuse me, 8:00 and 3:00.
Okay, so we have 9:00, 8:00, 2:00, and 3:00. Motion by Councilmember Najarian, a second?
A second.
Oh, this is just an introduction, my apologies. Okay, okay. They've been both, and we'll vote on those in two weeks, though.
Correct.
Right. Okay, very good. Thank you. What is next?
Next are oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The City Manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, we'll start with Kamit Givorg. I'm sorry, I can't read your handwriting. If you could state your name, please.
Hi, I'm Vor Kudian. I'm here as a father, as a husband, and a gay community member. I'm here to address some comments made by Mauro Najarian Yakobian last week. She came in here and berated council people and elected officials for going to a gay, gay event from the Armenian Gay Society. These council people were doing their job. They came to community members that are in the community to find out what our community needs, what our community is about, and they educated themselves. This lady berated these people from doing their job just because they were at a gay organization. That is ridiculous. She wore black to this meeting because our organization had a, a meeting in Glendale. I mean, ridiculous. I'm glad the council people came to this event. Now you guys understand how we live every day. You guys came to one activity and got so much hate. We live like that every day from this community, and I hope you guys see that as a lesson to protect us, our community. We vote, we have a voice. Ms. Mauro doesn't own the monopoly on Armenian culture. She is the mouthpiece of the Azeri government at this point. She is coming in here and destroying the root fabric of what it is to be Armenian. We express, we experience our culture as well. She doesn't have a monopoly. So she was up here violating my First Amendment rights. She was saying that as a consenting adult, we are not allowed to have a voice. We cannot have drag shows. We cannot express our culture our way. She was reprimanding you guys for being part of that.
One, one second, one second. I don't want, yeah, something interfering with the speaker. Okay. Okay, please continue.
She's railing my First Amendment rights on how to express myself the way that I want to. She's expressing, she's railing my First Amendment rights of being able to be free and gather. We were not breaking any laws. She's railing against my Fourth Amendment rights as unlawful search. She's going out there looking for material to self-serve her argument. What we do as adults, consenting adults at an event, is nothing to her. I don't understand how she's so offended by this. She, as, as my people right now are in an act of genocide, has picked that I am enemy number one as a gay member in my community. She has spent her time and energy to come and rail an Armenian member of a community. Why isn't she, if she's so offended, my, my people are going through a genocide. We're losing lands, and we're seeing our people get killed. There's videos out there, but the most disturbing thing that she found was a man dressed in a woman's outfit and doing a show, and she was so offended by that. She made the dress, this person made the dress. There was nothing traditional, it was her rendition. Her First Amendment right is to create.
Excuse me?
Her First Amendment right as an American is to create her vision of life. You do not get to decide who is wrong or right. We have certain rights in this country, and you are trying to rail against my rights that are protected to me under the Constitution. There's a reason why you don't live in Armenia. There's a reason why I live in America with my family and my children, because you don't get to terrorize me. You don't get to terrorize me. So, coming to these places. So coming to these places and trying to scare you guys is not a tactic. They are a mouthpiece of dictators, because they're trying to take my rights away. They're trying to take your rights away. And I'm glad that you guys were there, and now you know how we live. The DJ that wanted to do business with us because he has a family to feed and he doesn't care, as long as he's able to feed his family, is getting attacked. The restaurant owner is getting attacked. Mr. Najarian said his sister's not a homophobe, right? You guys have been to 1,001 events. How many other—may I please finish my talk?
Just a second. Just finish your sentence, please.
Okay. How many other events has she come over here and complained about? None.
Okay.
Only the gay one event that has horrified—
Okay, let's leave it there.
May I ask a question? Non-inflammatory question.
Sure.
So you said councilmembers were at the event. Who was at the event?
The councilmembers at the event have already been documented.
So you won't answer?
It's not that I won't answer. They're already documented.
I'm asking you.
They were already documented. Your sister already let you know who was there.
Okay, let's—
Okay, so you don't want to answer? That's fine.
Yeah, let's go to the next speaker.
They were there, and whoever was there has already been named.
Who?
All right, let's—can we—is this productive?
Yeah.
Let's go on to the next speaker. Thank you very much. Rita M.
Okay, I'm here today on behalf of Armenian community, all Armenian diaspora, in regards to the Galas event. The Galas event went white. Everybody saw, including children even, and they were even disgusted, the same way as we adults are disgusted. You're our leaders. Is this what your example is? Is this what our families are supposed to follow you, your example? Our children are supposed to say, these are our leaders? Susia Badjan, Alan Asatrian? Yes, Nadya? Oh, okay. Hira Petian. And what I want to say that this was disgusting, and what you guys are doing, this is defaming our Armenian culture. Our soldiers fought, and they are still fighting to secure our country, the borders of our country, our traditions, our language, our flag, and you destroyed that beautiful image, the image of our flag and of Armenian women. The drag queen dancing and mocking Armenian dance, Armenian traditional woman, that's just mockery, and you go and you enjoy and you clap, and some people even give money? And you're leaders. We don't want leaders like that. We don't want you to be our leaders of our community, because we have values. We have Christian values if it is Armenian community. If it's not, still, our families are not going to be raised to applause what you did. That's just disgusting. Mayor Brockman, and you were not here last week to see when Mauro Yakovian spoke about the Galas event and showed the video. You are probably lucky not to see the video. I'm sure you all just saw it. But right now, you have your chance. Why don't you go on on record? And why won't you say that you find it disgusting to depict the Armenian woman in this way? And I also want to direct my word to gays and lesbians, gays and lesbians. Oh, you guys have a wrong opinion. We are not against gays and lesbians. You need to understand that LGBTQIA-plus, whatever it is, are using you, are using gays and lesbians to push their dirty political agenda. We have gays and lesbians, they're our friends, and they also against this disgusting things that whatever they're pushing, they're pushing here. The city council members are approving. The same thing is infiltrating in our schools. The same thing is infiltrating to our families through the kids, that you're indoctrinating, that that's a normal thing. That's not normal. That's abnormal. We will never accept that a drag queen is a normal thing. It's not. But please, specifically to gays and lesbians, we're not against you, and you need to understand that this government and the people in the power are using you, first of all, to create a divide between us and you, and to also push their agenda. This is it for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is—is it Belissa or Melissa? Belissa?
Not here.
Not here. Okay, Eric. I can't make that out. Is there an Eric, A?
Yeah.
Okay, please come forward, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, council. I'm going to start off with certain numbers that display the demographics of our great city. As of the 2020 census, we have roughly about 190,000, 200,000 individuals living in Glendale. Of those, there are 72,000 households. Of those, that had 30%—30% of those households had children under the age of 18, and 37,000, which is 51%, were married couple households. Of those households, the entire 70,000, unmarried opposite-sex partners were about 3.3%. Same-sex married partnerships, less than 1%. The overarching or overwhelming majority of the religion held by individual citizens in Glendale is Christianity, and then Judaism, and Islam. As representatives, do you believe—and I direct this to Councilwoman Alan Asatrian—that you are representing the good majority of those people that I laid out with those demographic numbers by— I think an event that mocks religious performances, religious clothing, and the religion of the majority of the people who live in this city, in this great state, in this great county. This is a First Amendment right for that individual to do. Yes, that's correct. There's nothing wrong legally what they did, but morally, there's something wrong about this. A man with a beard, dancing provocatively, wearing provocative women clothing, and undressing in a religious, designed garb, what is the meaning of that? What are they trying to gain positively? What kind of awareness, what kind of positive awareness are they trying to gain for their community? I don't see any positivity, and if you do, please let me know. We all know children are influential. That's why, as parents, as uncles, as aunts, as older brothers, when a child is growing, it is important to set certain standards in right and wrong, and introduce certain traditions that have brought us here. Now, I don't think that is something children should see. Now, I don't believe there were children at that event, but I do know in our parks and at our neighboring city Burbank parks, we have seen children events with individuals behaving in that manner. Now, I think it is dangerous to allow adult-aged men dressing up in such a way and being in proximity to young children. We do not need to go through the statistics and the mathematics of what happens, and I believe the council should look very deeply the next time they approve, or they allow parks, or whoever it is in the council, or in the government that approves licensing and permitting for individuals like this and organizations to have events for children or open to children without restrictions on city property. Once again, I have nothing against what they are doing legally. First Amendment protects what they do. I have nothing against LGBT community. I have nothing against anyone wanting to do what they want to do in the private events or the privacy of their homes, or whatever it is, but when it is directed to children, when it is in a public venue where children can gain access, parents have a problem with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Vahe Marudian.
I can speak?
Please go.
So there aren't going to be officers waiting for me like last week. They're not going to be walking me out. Last week, when I walked out on Tuesday, there were three officers waiting for me at the door. I started walking into the stairs to walk down, and they followed me. I stopped, pulled out my phone to pretend like I'm going on my phone, and they stopped. I continued walking, and they were walking directly behind me. They were practically walking me out, and two days later, I received a call from a detective asking me why I wanted to come to the council meeting, what business I had, what they could help me with. So I keep coming back because I keep being ignored. As I mentioned, the first two times I was here, I used to be an employee here. During the first two to three years of my employment, oftentimes, I prepared the little packets that you guys receive for your council meetings. I would print it one-sided, stapled, paper clipped, rubber bandied, however it's made. So because I keep being ignored, I made a packet of 10 pages to get your attention because I'm not being able to get it. I'd like to give this out so I could be passed over to you guys. There's five copies, one for each council member and one for the mayor. The first item is the email I sent to all four councilmembers on June 26th, a copy of that email, because I don't think any of you have that email anymore. You probably deleted it. Item number two on that is a copy of the restraining order applied by the city of Glendale. The plaintiff—or the petitioner on that application is the city of Glendale, so I don't really have the option of speaking to anybody else besides the city of Glendale for this application and the lies that were filed or were filled out on it. Item number three is a response from the city attorney's office, specifically from the attorney who filled out that application, saying, "With respect to the restraining order, the city considers this matter closed, as it was denied at the last hearing." So I guess because it's close to this one attorney, this matter is close to everybody else. Item number four is where things get interesting, and that I really want to grab—get your attention, because my email didn't. Late 2021, I was assaulted a couple of times, and when I called the Glendale Police Department, the officers who arrived didn't appropriately handle the situation, so I thought I would report those calls to Internal Affairs for them to do an investigation and to answer to me why those officers didn't do their jobs appropriately the way I expected them to. One of those officers is actually in the back, standing over there, Officer Sarah. Internal Affairs investigation brought back, saying, "A review of our body-worn camera video and the follow-up investigation conducted by Sergeant Abramin helped to validate the eventual findings in this investigation. The facts as determined by our investigation found no violations of law or policy by our personnel." And then it goes on to say, "By seriously examining the concerns of our community, we retained their confidence and became more effective as a law enforcement." Item number five is the first page of docket of the charges that were filed with the Glendale courthouse across the street. So the Internal Affairs, when they investigated these four incidences that I told them to investigate and how officers responded to it, responded back to me, saying, "On May 31st, 2022, with the police chief's signature, that they found no wrongdoings. However, four and a half months later, one detective reviewed one of these calls and thought, no, there's something wrong here. I should go ahead and file this with the Glendale courthouse." And as of today, that case is still going on, and it's currently set to go to trial. So what I did was, I took that Internal Affairs letter sent to me by the police chief with his signature, a copy of item five—that's the court docket for that case—and resubmitted it to Internal Affairs to have them investigate it one more time, which is item number six. When I called them and asked them who would be investigating, the police chief and Sergeant Abramin in this matter and on this letter, I was told that the person would be Sergeant Abramin. So Sergeant Abramin is going to be investigating himself and the police chief. I think there's definitely something wrong there, and last Tuesday before the meeting, I was over at the city manager's office asking for a meeting with the city manager. I'm still waiting for a word on when that meeting will happen. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, next speaker, Mauro Yakovian.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mauro Yakovian. It has been a week since I was here in front of council to call out the despicable strip show by the drag queen at the Gay and Lesbian Armenian Society event. The response and anger from the community has been undeniably monumental. Other than Councilwoman Najarian, who went on record to show his disgust, the rest of you have remained silent, except for perhaps Councilmember Kasakian, who tried to paint me as anti-gay. It's a sorry attempt, a sorry attempt from the woke playbook to avoid accountability. And really, why can't the Galas organization just be accountable? Why couldn't Councilmember Kasakian say, "I do support the gay and lesbian community, but on this particular occasion, with this particular entertainment, it was wrong and insensitive?" And I mean, that's really what we're trying to get at. Let's not lose focus of the issue. What is this dadas, this Armenian traditional costume that everyone's talking about, that's causing such an uproar by this drag queen? That was defiled by this drag queen? Well, to that Galas speaker, Givorg, who got up, who has gone on social media attacking me, well, he says that the drag queen came from Canada because wants to grow the culture. He has all the right to grow the culture. I'm going to say here today, that's not what's growing a culture. That's what's called defiling a culture. The dadas is a sacred outfit for Armenians. It begins at a very young age, when the young Armenian girl takes up the needle and the thread and starts a long and loving process to stitch symbols into the clothing. The symbols represents her hopes—
I'm sorry, Mauro. Could you just give me a sec? The movement behind you is very distracting. I'm trying to concentrate on what you're saying, and she's back there moving the signs and running around, and it's just very distracting. So can we just all sit and listen to Mauro? Thank you.
Okay, please continue.
I'll start by going back to what is a dadas. It's this Armenian traditional costume that was defiled by this— It's this Armenian traditional costume that was defiled by this drag queen. And the gentleman who came up from the Gallas society, he's gone on social media attacking me. He said that this drag queen came from Canada because the drag queen wanted to grow the culture and has all the right to grow the culture. And I'm here to sit today to say, that's not what is, that's not what grows a culture. That's what defiles a culture. The dadas is a sacred outfit for the Armenian people. And it starts at a very, very young age for the Armenian, for the Armenian girl. It starts when she takes the needle and the thread and she starts a very long process, months and months, as she stitches into this clothing, symbols that represent her hopes, her dreams, her love of God. And yes, God, because stitched into that clothing are crosses, symbolizing the Christianity faith of the Armenian people. She spends many, many years adding to her story with the finest thread she can find. It shows her great patience, her great virtue of patience, because one who has the most beautiful dadas with all of the symbols, well, that shows the character of the young woman. In it, as I said, will have the cross, the pomegranate and the cypress tree, among many other symbols. All of her life, she decorates it and it shows her highest revered qualities. It represents the story of the Armenian woman. So I'll double down. That trans drag queen who took our sacred dadas in a strip show to show, as I've been told just recently, not just underwear, but to strip down to his sadomasochistic underwear and then he steps on it. Well, this was depraved. And your silence condones this disgusting and misogynistic act. When the Azeris and the Turks desecrate the Armenian dadas, you call them animals. But when the gay and lesbian Armenian society does it, you laugh and cheer and throw money at them. Let's have accountability. Shame on all of you again.
Thank you. Okay. Next speaker, Alan Dish.
Good evening, City Council. I wanted to talk about Mr. Kasakyan and Stalin, but I'll save it for another time. I'll save it for another time. I'd really like to begin with an anecdote that really happened to me and maybe find some common ground between these two, in these culture wars. Four years ago, I was at a Armenian history lecture in the Eskijian Museum up in the valley. It was about recreating the Armenians' way of life in the Ottoman Empire before 1915. And there was a Q and A and so I asked a question. I, I said, okay, this is wonderful. We want to know how were the Armenians living before 1915? And we saw their categories, food, culture, in the sense of like poetry, music, writing, you know, dress and so on and so on. And so I asked a very simple question. I said, but there's two categories missing here that are very crucial for a way of people's way of life. I said sexual relations, relations between men and women and hierarchical relations, relations of power. So the presenter said, that's a wonderful question, but he said, we don't have enough information about those things. Maybe you can look in some diaries and so on and we can fill in those gaps. But now comes the punchline. I, I hope you pay attention to it because it's, it's very delicious. After this lecture, under, it was in a church, so under the church, there is a kind of reception area and two elderly Armenian women came up to me and they said they were from Fresno. So they told me in English, that was a wonderful question, young man. There's just one problem, Armenians don't have sex. Why am I mentioning this? Obviously, sex is a taboo in Armenian society and much more if you combine it with this, let's say, American puritanism, we get what we get. At the same time though, you know, I came here critical of woke at some point, the excesses of just canceling and more and more, I believe these two sides are mimicking each other. So what can I do at 12:00 AM on whatever, on a Wednesday morning is simply say that I don't think sexuality is a free choice, but also I don't think it's simply biology. Okay? There's a lot of hysteria going around. I definitely think there are problems in our, let's say, permissive societies, but I don't agree with the conservative neoconservative solution, like let's just go back to some fixed whatever values and then prohibitions so that the only way we can have enjoyment is if we violate these prohibitions. It's a messy situation. Sexuality and that's why, you know, I mean, one of the criticisms we're hearing is that, yes, we live in permissive times where you can do whatever you want, but the, that's why we need for some reason more kind of, for enjoyment, we need more, more and more kind of violence in order to enjoy or whatever. I, I, there are definitely other things I wanted to talk about, but I just came back from a trip to Montreal, incidentally, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say it's good to be back, but like I'm going to save the time for everyone else to come up and share their thoughts. And so have a good evening and maybe we'll see each other again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Damian Sullivan.
Mayor Dan, Ellen, Paula, Ara, everybody on the council and staff, I appreciate you letting me speak. Actually, I was at Ralph's and I was listening to the council meeting and I said, yeah, I think I'll just go over. So I apologize for the fact that I'm in my Pizza Planet shirt, my new Buzz Lightyear shoes that are embarrassing my family and they're going to be sorry that I wore them here tonight. But I, I just wanted to share this thought, you know, I, I often say I really love this town. I really do and it's a privilege to live here and I think that we have a phenomenal town, wonderful community. And when I say community, that word means so much. And what does a community include? A great community includes everybody. I'm going to say that one more time. A great city and a great community is one that welcomes and loves everybody. So if you are watching this anywhere in our city or anywhere, and you are gay, you are lesbian, you are straight, you are trans, you fall anywhere in the community of LGBTQ+ if you are in love with the Golden Gate Bridge, you might want to marry it. If you aren't bothering anybody, let's live and let live. I just think that when I see our city council meetings and I see people come up and I see hate and homophobia and discrimination being spread in this fantastic room, I feel that good citizens have an obligation to come here and refute that and say, I don't stand for that. I know there are many wonderful citizens in our town who do not feel that way. And if you're a Gallas event or you are somebody who just, if you're the next cast member on RuPaul's Drag Race, you're my friend, you're my, you might be my family member, you have my, you have my blessing to live your life and be a part of my life and I love about you, I love you and I care about you. And I think a lot of people in our town, a lot of people in our town feel the way I do. Love everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ramela Iraki.
As a matter, I'm here today even though I don't have anything against gay lesbians. But here, I want to be sort of an art critic here, but that thing, it was, I'm talking about the drag queen gala performances, that is very cheap, very banal way of performance and expressing yourself. I mean, yeah, just, just saying, I don't have anything against that, but it's very cheap. Very cheap. I think our city has a more high standards of cultural expression and yeah, just want to say it was a very cheap, cheap performance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Calls.
Can we close? What's that? Yeah, let's not take, I mean, it's, it's, the hour is late. We have seven, I think.
We have seven, one just dropped and I don't know if they're having an issue. They might call back.
Okay, well, if that person calls back, they're in the queue.
Great, okay. Our first caller is Gustavo Moreno. Gustavo, you're on air, you have five minutes.
Dear Honorable Councilmembers, Public Officials and esteemed members of the public, my name is Gustavo Moreno and I'm an individual member of the STAG working on the Glendale Integrated Resource Plan. My opinions are my own and do not represent the full group, GWP, or its consultants. I would like to follow up on my August 20th letter to council to provide public comment on the potential acquisition of natural gas turbines due to the electric rate increases and the 15 megawatt shortfall. A 30-year, $500 million bond at 4.25% is a total of $885 million. That's $385 million in interest alone. Let that sink in. Glendale resident residential electric rate will increase rates by 42% by 2026. Under this scenario, EVs will lose significant fuel cost benefit when compared to hybrid and ICE vehicles decreasing electrification assumptions. Gasoline costs are only high due to the war in Europe and OPEC plus supply reduction. There is plenty of supply. If OPEC plus and other oil majors think their product might be threatened, they will lower prices to protect their balance sheets. Not only is this a basic business principle, it is also very important to OPEC plus since those countries rely on their revenues from conventional fuel products for their state budgets and economy. There's still time to make changes. It only takes courage. I continue to recommend that the council consider using Rule 1135 before December 31st, 2023, to acquire 50 megawatts of new combined cycle natural gas turbines like the Siemens SGT 800 with an HRSG or two-word sillas. There is no clean energy, only degrees of pollution. When considering the arbitrary cost of fossil carbon, solar panels are at least three times carbon intensive, more carbon intensive than IPCC claims because 80% of them are made in countries that use coal to produce them. A natural gas turbine is only 8% more carbon emitting than a solar with battery system. Solar is really only good for local emission reduction. However, not only is solar very polluting, it is nearly impossible to escape the slave and child labor used to produce them. For these reasons, solar is not economic or an ethical solution at this time. The world is increasing its use of traditional fuels like natural gas, not decreasing it. Since Europe has reduced imports from Russia, they have reactivated regasification projects and developed new ones. This has led Europe to becoming the primary destination for US liquefied natural gas exports in 2022. Natural gas sells at a premium in the international markets. A good reason, the majority of utility companies lobby for its reduction in Houston, California. This policy has reduced the local supply and has raised electricity prices for consumers. Electricity prices in the state normally follow natural gas price trends because the natural gas units are often the marginal source of generation in the California ISO. Fortunately, we do not need to change our long-term objectives on climate change and greenhouse gases, which should remind ourselves, as mentioned today, we will assist California's transition to better technologies when they become affordable. Using gas is an actionable way to reduce CO2 emissions exponentially, as seen by one of our energy resource providers, such as It's a Mountain Power. That is all I have to say. Thank you for your time and for your public service.
Thank you. Our next caller is Fernando Rodan. Fernando, you're on air, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As you, most of you know, you've already met me this afternoon, Fernando Rodan, I'm the gentleman that was right in our wheelchair. I am a longtime resident of Glendale Employment Program representative for the California Employment Development Department at the Waukesha Job Center and Disabled Advocate. On September 11th, 2023, at 5:00 PM, we in the disability community have lost a great leader by the name of Lilith Navarro, Executive Director and Founder of CALIC, acronym for Communities Actively Living Independently Free. She founded CALIC in 2001, not 2002, typo, right, I'm sorry about that, for the sole purpose of, of assisting people with disabilities to live more independently by advocating against an inaccessible world in Los Angeles, California, and through the United States and, and her country of birth, the Philippines. I'm here to ask my city government for the following, and Director Navarro's honor. Make more sidewalks more disability accessible. Expand times for beeline buses and dollar rides to 10pm for those who are walking, who are working and going to school like Glendale Community College. Take people out of nursing homes and transportation, some or most people into private homes. The city of Los Angeles is or has started building 3,200 units for people with disabilities with the help of Director Navarro. I ask my city to equal that amount or do better by connecting with privately owned apartments like 1010 Apartments, which are located at 111 North Louis Street, or the Onyx Apartment on California Avenue and Central Avenue. And both are wheelchair accessible and unfortunately are expensive, but need to be affordable. Likewise, creating new apartment units without backups for, for wheelchair users. In other words, creating more apartments, but without the backups. And finally, honoring the memory of Director Navarro by create, I asked the city by, to create a disability advisory committee made of disabled and non-disabled folks who are volunteers to counsel the mayor and the council on any ADA related issues, especially honoring those people with disabilities during October for disability awareness month and remembering the history of people with disabilities in the city of Glendale. I ask any council member and the general public, if you folks have any questions, to call me at 818-415-6923. And before I close, I just want to say one thing. I've heard a lot about, about the Armenian community, but I also ask, and of course a lot about the LGBTQ community, but again, don't forget us people with disabilities. And I also ask, don't forget about the Ukrainians. Don't forget they have a war too. We also need to pray for the people in Russia who are, who are being forced by a tyrant in Russia. I really do ask that we in the city of Glendale be, get peace in honor of, of Director Lilith Navarro. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next caller is Melissa Cohen. Melissa, you're on air, you have five minutes.
Okay. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Melissa Cohen. I'm an LGBT activist and I'm here to speak on behalf of the people who cannot stand the idea that anytime gays and lesbians decide to have an event, that it involves men dressing up as women, adding fake body parts and wearing women's clothes and mocking women. It's appalling. And this time at the Gallas event, they raised the stakes and mocked Armenian culture in addition to mocking women. It's appalling to me that there aren't even any lesbians in Gallas that would say, hey, it isn't cool to mock women just to have a party. it isn't cool to mock women just to have a party. Can't we find some other form of entertainment? This is the worst possible message that you could send about gays and lesbians and the way that we respect or disrespect culture and women. I have not experienced any anti-gay sentiment from the parents other than that they don't really want to see so much, I would say insanity on the streets. I don't think that they mind so much people having relationships, people loving each other. I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue is men in bikinis with beards gyrating in the dress of a sacred culture or doing this in front of children, which is starting to happen more and more frequently. Now, I'm not Armenian, but I come from a culture that has traditions, and I think we all do, no matter what culture we come from or what background. And none of us would really want to see that desecrated in this way. I don't see why it's important, and I don't see what it has to do with being gay or lesbian that this is part of every entertainment, even something as like a fundraiser. I, it's just crazy. Now, I also wanna say that people pretending to be the opposite sex have zero to do with same-sex attraction. The LGBTQIA+ I'd love to explain all the letters, but everything after the LGBTQ is essentially straight people. And it's sending a terrible, terrible message about same-sex attracted people, that they are embracing a lot of things that really have nothing to do with, with loving somebody of the same sex. Wanting to be another identity or have successful parts has nothing to do with same-sex attraction. And I think we have to stop saying LGBTQ because it isn't real. LGBTQ is same-sex attraction. S is opposite-sex attraction. The S has more in common with the LGBTQ than any of it has to in common with the T. And when it comes to desecrating a culture or mocking women, I don't think that most lesbians and gay men are on that page. I think this is kind of a crazy new fad ushered in by this idea of changing sex and that you are what you say you are and that there's no such material reality. So anyway, I see the parents. I am completely against this, and I know a lot of lesbians and gay men are too. And where are the gay men in that Armenian group standing up for their mothers, for their sisters? Some of them have daughters, they have friends. This is disrespectful, let alone disrespecting culture. It's appalling, and I hope that this doesn't continue. I thought if I could, I would stand up and I would say something. I wouldn't talk about how this has something to do with being gay and that you're being anti-gay or gay people by opposing the mocking of women or the mocking of Armenian culture. That is ridiculous.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up. Next is Emmanuel Gulakian. Emmanuel, you're on air. You have five minutes. Go ahead.
Good evening. First, I would like to state that it's very late to be holding oral communications at this time of night. I viewed Santa Monica City Council meeting the other night, last week, and their oral communications began at about six-ish, very early on during their city council meetings. And so some speakers tonight have commented on this event that was held, which was quite controversial because based on the video footage, it's objectively observable that an entire culture was being mocked and justifiably, people in this community, an entire culture and the members of that culture are overwhelmingly outraged by it. And it's quite deplorable that city representatives appeared at that event and even a councilman last week, instead of openly supporting what was occurring in that video footage, instead of supporting it openly, he cited the First Amendment, even though nobody called for those folks to be prosecuted or arrested or anything like that. And even in countries actually where members of this culture live in massive numbers, certain countries in Eastern Europe and Western Asia, there actually would be criminal prosecutions over some of that conduct captured in that video footage. And so it's quite remarkable that some in the city, they don't seem to understand their constituents very well. They appear lost, maybe they're, they think they're in another community, perhaps to our west, certain communities to our west. But it just, it appears that some representatives or some officials, they don't understand the constituents that they report to represent. And what's happened here, it's appeared to cause massive divisions, and it's quite unprecedented. I haven't, I've lived in this town for a long time, and what's developed in the last year or so, it's quite extraordinary. And so that's basically all I wanted to say.
Our next caller is Frank Higginbottom. Frank, you're on air. You have five minutes. Sorry, our next caller is Frank Higginbottom. Frank, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Great, all right, thank you. Hello, city council members. I just, as a longtime resident and parent of kids that go to Glendale School, I've very much paid attention to what's gone on the last couple of years. And why we see this fight in our city going on is because outside entities have come in and they have used the first CRT as an issue to try to raise people's angst about what's going on in schools. It's very clear, if you look at who comes to these city council meetings to try to bombard you with anti-gay, anti-lesbian, anti-trans political ideology. We know who it is. And I feel, again, beyond sorry that you have to sit there every week, and of course, it's late at night now, but have to listen to these diatribes. But I wanna thank you guys for your patience and encourage you to do more to try to bring the public's awareness as to what actually is going on and why these culture wars are happening in Glendale, why we have Proud Boys and people coming to school board meetings who don't have children in our schools. Because a guy who failed to make it to attain a job where you are in city council, Jordan Henry, has decided he wants to be on the school board, and he has used his, your political platform to help him develop a fan base, develop a bunch of right-wingers that are nationally going after school districts in many places. And we're just part of a larger organization to try to defund public education, attack teachers' unions. And we really need you guys to start standing up and making the public more aware of what's actually going on so that we can defeat him again as he runs for an office he is not qualified to be in. And, you know, as a longtime person involved in education, having put my kids through USD, I wanna make sure that I do my civic duty and make sure that every citizen knows that this is not a person we should trust with that job. That's why I'm calling tonight. And again, I wanna thank you guys for having to listen to this, but this is what public discourse is, and I hope that this makes more people aware of what's going on in his candidacy and why I'm totally against it. All right, thank you guys and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Our last caller is Sasha. Sasha, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sasha. I'm an LGBTQ Armenian who grew up in Glendale, and I went to Glendale School. I wanna thank the city council members who continue to support Gala's and LGBTQ Armenians, as well as the other elected officials who bravely stand behind us and fight for equality. Today, I'm gonna read some comments prepared by my good friend. We live in a painful time as Armenians. I know that each of our community members is devastated and trying to make sense of how to mourn, pick ourselves up and take action. We get to be angry, we get to be sad, we get to feel lost. I'm going through that myself. In the midst of our Armenian community being decimated, our culture, heritage, and history facing erasure, LGBTQ Armenians who are active participants within Armenian culture, mourning and grieving just the same, just as much as the next Armenian, are targeted and attacked by bigots claiming that we are decimating Armenian, because we choose to celebrate our culture and take pride in showing, showcasing our love for being Armenian through artistic expression. Listen, we don't get to isolate and attack parts of our very own community right now. There is no room for more division. We cannot afford it. LGBTQ+ Armenians and their supporters are not your enemy. We are literally a living, breathing commitment to unconditional love towards being Armenian. Gala, LGBTQ+ Armenian society, exists because there is other, there is no other way forward for us. Gala is a love letter to being Armenian. It is a testament that we stand together and we stand strong to preserve, uphold, and carry forward the language, art, custom, tradition, and understanding of Armenian. Many of us LGBTQ+ Armenians have tried removing ourselves from a community that wants us dead. And when we've done that, it has left us feeling dead inside. Every single day, we actively choose to live as LGBTQ+ Armenians despite the adversity that we face. We cling on to the core of what we know deep down our culture is: resilient, forward-facing, rich in the mind and the heart, and a torchbearer of innovation, creativity, and beauty. In a world where our Armenian culture is under, our Armenian culture and community is under systemic and organized attacks, where outside forces are hell-bent on erasing us, your attacks on your own LGBTQ+ Armenian community members is enforcing the same destruction we face as a whole culture. Desecration of our culture does not happen with allowing freedom of expression by Armenians. Our culture grows and expands its longevity and vitality by allowing its expression in various art forms. The desecration and loss of our culture does happen when we shun, isolate, and demonize our community members under puritanical definitions enforced upon us by dogmatic beliefs that serve to oppress rather than liberate us. It happens by demonizing LGBTQ+ Armenians and organizing attacks against them. Additionally, no one group gets or individual gets to decide what is Armenian and what is not. No one group or individual owns Armenian culture. Since when has anyone become the gatekeeper of Armenian culture? I invite everyone to take a long and hard look at what being Armenian and expressing Armenian means to them. Hatred is not one of them. Policing of artistic expression is not one of them. That's the end of the statement. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. That was the last call.
Last caller, okay. Next item is adjournment, correct?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, we're adjourned at 10:45 PM. Thank you.